Good evening. 6:30 PM, December 8th, 2025. I call the Select Board Regular Business Meeting to order. If you are able, please join in the place of leaving. This meeting is being broadcast live on TCTV Cable Station 8 and on a YouTube web platform. A recording will be available on TCTV YouTube channel after the meeting. Is anyone else recording the meeting this evening? Please silence your phones at this time. As a reminder, public participation will be limited to citizen input. Maximum of three minutes per person, so to be fair to all. This meeting is governed by the Massachusetts Open Meeting Law and Select Board Policy. This meeting is for the Board to conduct its business. We have town employees, board members, who need to be places in the morning, as well as residents who may be watching from home and who may lose interest in meetings going over four hours. The first item up is meeting minutes from 11/24/2025. I would move to approve the meeting minutes of November 24th, 2025, as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on those minutes?
Other than Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just wanted to make a notation, not about... I didn't find anything other than the page numbers. It'd be helpful to have page numbers at the end.
Anything else? Hearing none on the motion, how would you vote, Mr. May?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Toth?
Yes.
Ms. Basso?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder, yes. Next item is the Executive Session Minutes. November 24th, I would move to approve the Executive Session Meeting Minutes of November 24th, 2025, not to be released to the public at this time.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on those minutes? Hearing none on the motion, how would you vote, Mr. May?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Toth?
Yes.
Ms. Basso?
Yes.
I vote yes. At this time, in regards to an open meeting law complaint filed against the Board, we heard back October 15th, 2025, they found that the Board did violation... Did violate the open meeting law regarding the fact that, uh, over the past, from January 1 of 2025, uh, they looked at the minutes until through July, and the Board had failed to review the minutes and consider any that could be released, uh, to the public. So as ongoing, I had, uh, reviewed the Select Board Executive Session Minutes postings, beginning from January 2025 through today. The Board voted on 9/10 and 9/24/2025 for executive session meeting minutes held on 3/26, 4/9, 4/23, 5/28, 6/11, 6/25, 7/9, 8/27, 2025, to be accepted and voted for release to the public. The executive session meeting minutes of January 22, 2025, part of the April 23rd, 2025, uh, September 10th, 2025, November 27th, 2025, involved ongoing collective bargaining with the police and dispatch, as well as opioid litigation. Those minutes will remain withheld from public view. The executive session for September 10th, 2025, the opioid litigation and contract negotiations for the town administrator will require clarification from Town Council on the litigation portion. For the September 30th, 2025, contract negotiations town administrator will be on the next agenda for a vote and recommend release to the public. And that takes care of doing what the Attorney General wants us to do. Next item is citizen input. How many people wish to speak this evening?
Merry Christmas, and just one thing real quick. I know there was a, uh, potential lien court date today for 24 Holman, so I'm hoping, and I trust Cheryl, I talked to her and I forgot to ask her, but I trust that if there's anything that comes up with that in the future, I'd like an update, or I'd ask the Board for an update on that property, please.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Administrator, anything?
Sure, uh, yeah, a quick report. The...I want to give the Board an update on, uh, police Kevlar vests. They were ordered in October, paid for, for instance, the light department, as I previously mentioned, and they should be here with, uh, about mid-February. So hopefully, we're gonna get there a couple of months early. Just wanted to let the Board know, Parks and Recreation will not be able to make this meeting. There's supposed to be a joint meeting, uh, later in the, uh, evening. They weren't able to form a quorum, so, um, so they weren't able to make it. Hopefully, we can, um, uh, have a discussion about what the Board was looking for with them and just, um, send them a suggestion through me or a question, and we can, um, get the answers we needed that way. Wanted to give the Board a brief, uh, update on FY27 budget timeline. Uh, I spent some time last week going through, um, what the town did last year, as far as that timeline goes. Um, next meeting, I will bring to you a, uh, draft timeline that closely mirrors what you did last year. Um, one slight update is that, um, I'm going to be giving the department heads until mid-January, as opposed to the end of December, to submit their first draft. From what I could see, it didn't affect anything, um, in particular, as far as presentations go, or the Saturday meeting. And, um, it'll give them half a fiscal year, um, to assist in their FY27 budget and preparation. Gives them a little bit more data to work with, uh, by getting half the fiscal year done. And by the end of this week, I will send out budget templates for them to, uh, begin working on. Also wanted to give a shout out to, uh, the accountant Amber and our Assistant Justice Graves. The tax rate was, um, set at $11.87 per thousand. $11.87 cents per thousand. That was a lot of work on their part, and I just wanted to say thank you to the two of them. Uh, thank you to Senator Durant, who held office hours today at Town Hall. Uh, he came in for about an hour. Unfortunately, I missed him, but, um, we always appreciate him coming by and speaking to Templeton residents. And, uh, just a quick update on fun events in the town. There was a bread and pastry donation by Hannaford that'll be available at the Senior Center on December 10th, along with, uh, also happening on December 10th at the Senior Center, is an ugly sweater holiday party, so I encourage everyone to attend, especially if you have an ugly sweater. I'm looking at you, Jeff. Registration is required for that event, though. At the library, starting on December 16th, uh, the library will be debuting Mango Language online platform, which will be free to library patrons and includes more than 70 world languages and dialects, including American Sign Language. It's available via remote access and a big, um, benefit if you're looking to learn a language for free. And the library will also be hosting an open house on December 18th from 1:00 to 4:00 PM. Uh, the Director and her staff will be putting on a spread of homemade baked goods for the patrons and playing some holiday music. Uh, staff and elected officials are all welcome and encouraged to attend. And that is my report.
Ugly sweater, huh? Hustle working, bro. Thank you. Thank you. Under new business, we have, you know, new employees to introduce. No appointments to be made. We have a public hearing scheduled for 7:30, so Mr. Pecos for health insurance update from the NFP?
So I'll just introduce NFP briefly. Anyone watching at home, these are our wonderful consultants who advise us and guide us on all insurance needs, specifically today we're talking about our health insurance. Kevin Pecos and Ken Lombardi have been working there for years. Kevin Pecos, I should note, is a 40-year town manager, so he comes with experience that no other company pretty much provides. And, um, your...his presentation to you today is in your packet.
Did we check his references, just to be sure?
Oh, yeah, they were.
Thank you for that wonderful introduction of my colleague Ken Lombardi, who, um, I have many years as a town administrator, municipal official, and, uh, only 23 years doing insurance. Some of those years work concurrent, don't try to do the math, I'm not 90 yet. I'll get there. Ken, on the other hand, has as many years doing health insurance as I have doing, um, town administration, and so we're...I think we got it pretty well bracketed for you. And Mr. Chairman, um, I will join with you if you'd have me in a couple of weeks with the ugly sweater contest, um, because my wife gave me a bute last year, and I haven't had the courage to wear it in public, but I'll show up. I spent a lot of years living in Winchton and right up the streets, so, uh, I know the neighborhood well. My son lives here, and my other son lives next door in Westminster, so we'll be happy to come here for the contest. So it's been a while since we visited with you. I think it was fully six months ago, and I see some, uh, some new faces on the Board. Congrats, uh, to you folks, and, uh, good to see the folks we've seen before. So, um, when last we visited with you, we were telling you kind of about how things were going. We were near the end of the fiscal year, but not quite there yet. And tonight, what we're doing is just appearing. We'll try to come and see you once, no less than once every six months or so, and tell you how the health plan, your employee health plan is going. Single biggest cost item in your budget? So, um, um, you know, we'd like to keep the Board appraised of what's going on. So, the presentation for you is gonna be in three or four parts. We encourage you to ask any questions along the way. We think it'll take about 15 or 20 minutes, and, um, whatever questions you might have, uh, in addition to that. So first part of this is to tell you how, um, you're doing currently. Now, just, uh, for the Board's education, the town of Templeton is a member of a group purchasing consortium. Cities and towns, a small size. Buying health insurance these days, um, is extremely hazardous, because it's always fraught with roller coaster increases and decreases. But in the current environment, which we'll talk a little bit about, it would be an extremely grave error to try and buy your health insurance alone as a small town with 50, 60 subscribers. So you're in a big collaborative, and that collaborative buys health insurance on your part, for your part. However, each member of the collaborative is individually rated on their own with respects to claims. Now, you buy certain other things that add into your health insurance, um, on a group basis, and you get some tremendous discounts. So administrative services, um, stop-loss insurance, think like your car owner, you have a deductible, and you don't pay above that. If you have a claim, you have the same kind of coverage on your plan, and you buy that as part of a large group. And there's other products that you buy. So you get the benefit of being in a big group, but your claims right now are on your own. Now, what we want to do is tell you how it's running for fiscal '26, July 1/25 to the present. Then we're gonna talk about how it ended on June 30/25, the prior fiscal year. And then we're gonna talk a little bit about an opportunity that you're gonna have to make things, uh, we think substantially better. So, I'm gonna kick it off by turning it over to my colleague Ken, who'll talk to you about how claims are going this year.
Do you guys all have a copy of the information? Try to get into some of the details here, so that we don't go through the minutia. As Kevin had mentioned, the way the health plan works today is you aren't part of a consortium, but the, uh, the healthcare plan does record claims, attributable to the membership of the town of Templeton, uh, employees. So just kind of back up this whole story. One of the reasons why, uh, this sort of program was implemented was to try and maintain robust benefits, right? So the employee's health plan is still one of the few healthcare plans in the state that doesn't have a deductible, for instance. Still very robust, uh, not that much cost sharing to the member. That was one of the goals, was to be able to keep that, uh, benefit level intact. Uh, we actually, um, had some favorable renewal adjustments, right? In the first couple of years of the program. We have seen some utilization increasing recently, but everybody has. The program you were a part of before was for the Maya Healthcare Trust. That program has seen some significant adjustments. Last year, as high as 18.9%. Previous to that was about 14.8% was the average. So the industry as a whole has seen some high, uh, adjustments, as Kevin had mentioned. But what we do have in place, I'll try and make this simple explain, is a creative, uh, insurance arrangement, right? So, um, while the group isn't large and size, only about 70 subscribers covered right now, not very big, if you will, as far as, uh, being able to be self-insured, right? So in other words, pay your own claims. They're unpredictable, and cycles can be, uh, hazardous. So what we do have is a creative insurance arrangement as part of the overall program. And what that does is we limit claims to any one individual that's covered under the plan, up to $40,000. Everything over that is paid by a reinsurance organization. We also added something called an aggregate stop-loss. So, um, I kind of wanted you to maybe see this complicated slide here, to kind of explain what you're getting at. So the accounting works this way. So for a 12-month period, and I'll pick on, uh, July 24th through June 25, um, we record all of the claims incurred by the members. Uh, we, uh, record all the prescription drug claims incurred by the members, so both medical and prescription drugs. And those are totaled up against an aggregate level of, uh, protection. And we did, in fact, in this particular period, first year, exceed the aggregate stop-loss. So we filed on behalf of the town of Templeton for reimbursement. So what happens is the insurance company is gonna remove all claims over $40,000. Those are already been paid back to the trust on your behalf. And then everything over that, we're gonna get reimbursed for as well. But we still do have, in the first year, we have slight deficit based on the fact that enough premium, not enough premium, we neglected to cover all of our expenses. And there's, uh, ebbs and flows, right, of, uh, some of our groups that are in this trust. Some are in surplus and some are in deficit. It's the cycle of time where we're gonna see that happen occasionally. But what we have done is we've been able to identify, if you'll go on page seven, sort of the components of how the financial program works. And, um, this was by design, right? One of the reasons why our organization of working with the town and the Employee Advisory Committee, what we wanted to do was how do we find savings and cost reductions in a very challenging healthcare environment? This program that the town is in does that. Takes advantage of a couple of variables that typically you don't get access to when you're sort of in that arrangement you were with previously. And you'll see on page seven, there is a, a total of all the claims plus insurance costs and all the expenses associated with running the plan. It came in about $2.1 million. The revenue between you and the employees paid was about 1.5. Clearly, there's a delta, right, a deficit. But what we also are showing you are all of the credits to the account. There were REX rebates, pharmacy rebates. So it's very typical today, in sort of this, uh, self-funding environment, if you will, that the prescription drug utilization, there's a discount that you get paid back, or rebate you get paid back as an employer who funds prescription drugs. Every insurance company that provides a pharmacy program, Harvard Pilgrim Healthcare is obviously the carrier, and we have a prescription drug program. The drugs covered, formulary list of, uh, medications. Manufacturers pay rebate, right, to, uh, provide services and provide their drugs on that list. So we reduced our deficit by rebates that are paid back to you, about $150,000. We also have excess claims that came back to you, further reducing the deficit. And we also have an aggregate stop-loss that will be coming, further reducing the deficit as well. One of the issues that was timing, right? So not all of those dollars are going to get paid in time to reduce the cash deficit that was created in the first year, but it won't help in the subsequent years. But if there was a minor deficit that was accrued in the first policy year. But that will come up, you know, be made up over time. But that's really how the program is running. So we are fairly close to target, although there was a small deficit this year. But what we have done is been able to manage or control the rate of increase. The town, working with the organization, the Mass Strategic Health Group, kind of works on how the renewal rate structure should work. If we were insured previously with Maya, we really didn't have a lot of negotiation power. They gave us a renewal. We had to kind of live with it. We either made plan design changes, modified the benefits to lower the cost. There was not a lot of marketing opportunities in our marketplace right now. It's Blue Cross Blue Shale, Harvard Pilgrim, who we're doing business with today, National Brigham Health Partners, and that's pretty much it, right? There's not a lot of carriers that are underwriting municipal health insurance. So we are in a small deficit for this year. We're starting to build back up with reinsurance claims and aggregate stop-loss reimbursement and further REX rebates for this year. So we did end the first year with about $141,000, uh, as the deficit from the first year. Other communities, right, that are in the same deficit program or arrangement have processed reimbursements to the trust to pay for their share of the deficits. Um, and then the others that have a surplus, those are being improved well. So we are kind of at that point, right, Kevin, where we have a number that we wanted to present to you, kind of talk about what that means in the scheme of things. But one of the things we are, uh, were pleased about is we were able to avoid some significant renewals from your prior insurance arrangement with the Massachusetts insurance arrangement. Last year's, uh, high rate increase was 18.9%. Now, that's twice what you guys saw, uh, July 1 of 2025.
You had a 3.5 comparatively, so.
Comparatively big. So what we're trying to do is deliver the same amount of benefits, robust network providers. And we had worked on some details. I know James might be aware of some of the, uh, issues that were worked on when this thing was first implemented, and they've been corrective action taken to keep some of those, um, corrected. But ultimately, what we have done is at least got to the town to a point in time that if it's had stayed exactly the same, robust, no deductible, for instance. Financially, still better off than if we had paid those significant higher rate increases over the last couple of years. And that was the whole nature of being part of this particular trust. Give the employees more benefits, um, as tightly rated as possible.
Okay, thanks, Ken. So, you ended fiscal '25, June 30/25. That's July 1/24, June 30/25, fiscal '25, with $141,000 deficit. You can see that from the prior chart. Now, that's about, uh, 10%, roughly, what the total paid premiums. You only had a 3.5% rate increase that year, July 1/24. That was inadequate. As you're probably aware, health insurance, uh, health costs in general in Massachusetts have escalated dramatically. First page of the Boston Globe two days ago talked about just how bad it is. You folks are beating the curve so far by a very considerable margin, but that does not make you immune from the fact that it's gone up. So, um, a 3.5% increase was unbelievably low for last year. And that produced this deficit. However, the deficit, as you can see on page eight, $141,000, but that comes down even further in the following way. For the fourth quarter of fiscal '25, which would have been April 25, May and June of '25, you did not get any more stop-loss specific money. So any claim that went over $40,000 for the last quarter, you didn't get any reimbursements for that, okay? But you have a second layer of protection, which works just like your homeowners or your car insurance, except it's a little different. So with your homeowners or your car insurance, you have a level of...you have a deductible, which typically is $1,500, whatever. In the world of health insurance, because claims can be catastrophic and devastating to any community, but particularly smaller ones, we provide a second coverage, not us, but your insurance company. We're your advisors, not your insurance company. But they provide a second level of protection. So they take what they believe the total claims for the year are gonna be. They cover that with a little bit more of a margin, and then you insure everything above it. So if you exceed that number, that's called aggregate protection. You get all that money back. So you did. And right, and so what happens is from July 1/24, December 31st of '25, it's an 18-month policy. If your claims go over that specific, that aggregate level, then they pay you back the money you went over by. So right now, you've got somewhere between $150 and a quarter million of money pending. You won't be seeing that probably till January, because it doesn't end to... The rating period doesn't end until December 31st. But at some point, you're gonna get a big chunk of money back. Now, that money is attributable to the claims that ended on June 30/25, okay? So your actual deficit, when you take that $141 and you subtract out what you're gonna get back, your actual deficit for June 30/25 is probably darn close to zero. I mean, might be a little higher. We, we're showing $63,000 based on what the reinsurance company is telling us right now. The dust will settle in about five or six weeks, and we'll be able to give you an exact number. So basically, the situation is with a 3.5% rate increase on June 30, July 1/25, you have finished the year at an almost break-even manner. That is astoundingly good. Now, it's not like anything did anything, anything in particular. We can't take credit for this. We can't say, oh, we're geniuses, we did this. Basically, it's the rate was the rate that we computed, Board approved it, and it, and it was...we're very fortunate that, given the environment right now in healthcare, that you actually got through the year with that 3.5% rate. Because while you were doing a 3.5, most of the rest of the world was doing double-digit, and you got through the year. Now, don't, please, think that's what's gonna happen on July 1/26. There's gonna be no single-digit rate increases on July 1/26. It's a whole different world now. If you haven't read that Boston Globe article, Google that, please, and read it, because it's probably the best single article we've seen that explains what's going on. Venture Capital, you guys all know about, um, Steward Healthcare, and what they're doing to healthcare hospitals in general in Massachusetts. GLP-1 drugs for weight management, I'm sure you've all heard about that. They're driving costs up astronomically, and they don't work terribly well. 80% of the people who use them put their weight right back on. So everybody is abandoning them after two years of willy-nilly writing scripts for them, and, and they don't produce the result they're supposed to. Lots of organizations are looking at whether or not they're even gonna offer them anymore. Group you're a part of has made no decision yet, but they're certainly looking at it. But those costs went up astronomically. Not GLP-1 drugs for diabetes management. Those are proven to work. GLP-1 drugs for weight management don't work. Drop the weight, put it back on, they don't work. So those costs are in here, they're running, and they're costing a fortune to everybody. So, uh, the news for fiscal '25 is pretty good. So, and if you flip to page 10, there's a chart there. So what did the Mass Strategic Health Group Board of Directors decide? On the left column, starting with Abington and going down to Webster, are all the communities that are in Mass Strategic, okay, that you're partnered with. In the June 30/25 deficit column, you can see the amount of money in brackets that selected communities owe. Everybody didn't have a deficit, but a lot did. So, the Board said, so take, um, take Franklin, for instance. Franklin ended the year June 30/25 with a $1.5 million deficit. Now, they also happened to pay, you know, uh-huh, you know, $30, $40 million in premiums, so that's a giant number, but percent-wise, it's not so bad. The Board said, "We can't expect our members to all pay these deficits back immediately." So what they said is, "We expect them to pay 45% of that deficit back over the course of fiscal '26, July 1/25 to June 30/26," okay? So, remember that to the extent that you did not pay enough premium, but your health bills still got paid. So all the claims that came in from your employees and their dependents were paid. There is no money owed on behalf of your employees or dependents for fiscal '25. Where did it come from? Mass Strategic loaned it to you. So this big giant organization fronted you the money. And now what they're saying is, gotta get it back and provide it forever. It's an interest-free loan, they don't charge interest. Who is it that provided you the loan? Well, see these communities in the left column that have a blank, a zero next to them for June 30/25? They had surpluses. They gave you the loan. So it's your fellow communities that gave you this money. It's not the state, it's not a bank, it's your fellow communities. And they need to have it back, because now some of them are starting to run deficits in fiscal '26. So that's the way these big groups work, and it's a very...it's a great thing, because had you not had the protection of this group, somebody would have been handing you a bill sometime from July 1/24 to June 30/25, saying... somebody would have been handing you a bill sometime from July one twenty-four to June thirty twenty-five, saying, you're not paying enough. We need you to pay more. So they extended the credit. So the board said, look, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna tell everybody that has a deficit as of June thirty, pay half of it, forty-five percent. Not half, forty-five, sometime during the year. And then we're gonna watch and see what happens with the new rate on July one twenty-five, and see if that erodes the remaining fifty-five percent of the deficit, because it just rolls year to year, those deficits or surpluses. So what you owe right now, if you look at the Templeton column, the payment target's a hundred and sixty-six thousand. Of that, you got some money back from pharmacy benefit. That's just some money that, because you're in a large group, and we hire a company that looks at these expensive drugs, and they go, they find places to get those same drugs cheaper, and so they get you money back. Now, if you're in any other organization in the state, the GIC, Maya, anybody else, you will never see that money. They get it, and they take it for their own treasury, and they say they give it back to you, but you will never see that money. With Mass Strategic, you see exactly what you get back. So that was one quarter, that was three months, fifty-seven thousand. So you probably get back a couple of hundred thousand dollars in pharmacy rebates last year. So that brought your deficit down to three thirteen, simple. Now, of that, the forty-five percent adjusted target is one forty-one, and that's the number you owe. So if you flip the chart, pick the page to page eleven. So how do we, how do you pay back this deficit? It's pretty simple. You pay back the money as soon as you can. We would have, I would have been here telling you this probably back in September, because we can't figure this out for the year ending June thirty twenty-five, until you get two or three months into the next year, because claims are still running through the system. But we also knew we had pharmacy benefit money pending and stop-loss money pending, so we have to wait for the dust to settle, be able to figure it out. So now we know. So we look at this deficit, and we say, okay, you have multiple funds. So you've got the general fund, which is where all your tax money comes in, your property tax money, and it funds the bulk of your budget, police, fire, education, library, town hall, et cetera. But then you also have what's called enterprise funds. Enterprise funds under Massachusetts law are self-supporting funds. They use rates. They don't use taxpayer money. Now, it's usually a hybrid. There's usually some taxpayer money in there and some ratepayer money. Some towns, they run these enterprise funds, and it's one hundred percent ratepayer, and that's it. They set rates, they collect it, it stays in the enterprise fund, and that's who pays the bill. The theory is simple. Not everybody is necessary, let's take your water enterprise. Not necessarily everybody in Templeton is on the water, public, public water, and so you can't fairly fund that through taxation, which is everybody. So you establish rates, and the people that are on the system pay for the system. They also pay for their employee salaries and employee fringe benefits, okay? So to the extent you have a deficit, part of that is owned by these three, four enterprise funds that you operate, water, sewer, electric, and cable TV. Now, so we take the total number of employees that you have on the health insurance plan. We divide it by the number of employees that you have in each of these funds. We compute the ratio. We multiply times the deficit, and that's what each one of these funds owes. So the general fund owes a number, the water fund owes a number, the sewer fund owes a number, electric enterprise owes a number, and cable TV has one employee, they own a number. Everybody follow me on this, because this is important, because it's actually good news, because some towns don't operate enterprise funds. And to the extent they're in that red column over here on the previous page, that's all coming out of the taxpayers, because they don't have enterprise funds. You're fortunate. You run four enterprise funds, so the bill is not gonna be given directly to your taxpayers. It's gonna be partially them, representing the employees that are funded by general taxation. And then the rest of the bill gets paid by the enterprise fund ratepayers, okay? So these are the numbers, and it adds up to that one forty-four. The math never works exactly right, so it's one forty-four, but it comes out one forty-five. You get credit for whatever you pay, so don't worry about it. If you're paying an extra thousand, you get credit for it. So the repayment plan is very simple. You advance, you ask each of your enterprise funds to write a check and pay their share. We can invoice them if, you know, you, if they wanna get an invoice, they happy to give them an invoice from Mass Strategic, and then they pay the invoice. Now, usually the enterprise funds carry substantial positive balances, because they also fund their capital needs through the rates, so they usually have substantial positive balances. So they should be, and these are small numbers compared to the size of their funds, so they should be able to write checks for this easily. Now, they may not understand this initially, because this is the first time they're seeing this, because up until this year, they had surpluses. So we explain this to the board tonight. Hopefully, you guys say, yep, we get it. Great, we bless this. And then I work with James to work with the enterprise funds to have them understand it, so they can write their checks. The intent is to have you write, either the enterprise funds pay the general fund, and you write one check for the town, back to Mass Strategic, or you write one, two, three, four, five check. Doesn't matter, whatever way you wanna do it. But it's gotta total that number, and we wanna get it in before the first of the year, if that's possible. Now, how do you do this? You can't invent money. It's not magic. So what happened is you have an appropriation right now for health insurance. It's in your general budget, and it's in each of these enterprise fund budgets. You pay this money out of that appropriation. That means the appropriation is short. You won't have enough left in it to pay your monthly health insurance bill through June thirty. So at your spring town meeting, you have to plus up your health insurance budget. Now, there's about, on my count, long in my forty-seven years of experience as a town manager, there's about thirteen or fourteen different ways to do that. There's really a lot of ways to fund deficits during the same fiscal year. And I will, James knows a lot of those already. He's a very talented guy, but I'll help out as well, because he's got lots and lots of years of doing it. And we'll offer some advice on how to do that. Don't think it'll be burdensome to you at all. It's not a gigantic number, and there's gonna be a lot of opportunities for a way you can plus that budget back up. What you cannot do is you cannot carry this deficit to June thirty. It's gotta get paid back now. It's already six months late. But Mass Strategic is your own towns. It's other boards of selectmen. It's other town managers. It's an arrogant regional school district. They're also a member. They've got a deficit too, that they're gonna have to pay back. So everybody has to pay their fair share into the fund. It's only forty-five percent this year. It's not the whole thing. Hopefully, fiscal twenty-six, you do better. You don't have as big a deficit, or you whittle it down, and come June thirty twenty-six, you know, you don't owe many money. If you do, okay, we work it out. But this is your own community, just like yourself, that are saying, hey, we loaned you the money, gotta get it back. And at the end of the day, it really is basically how the Mass Strategic Health Group works on a cash flow basis. So right now, you can see on the chart, you're carrying a pretty hefty, a total of about five million in debt that all these communities owe, okay? So they're about a hundred-million-dollar organization, about a tenth of a billion dollars. That's the total premium they pay. So they're carrying a five percent deficit. They gotta get most of that back. So that's the part that we most wanted to talk to the board about tonight, and make sure you understand it, and make sure that we answer any questions. I also wanna talk to you about, a little bit about one other thing. But that's the biggest and most important part. So, Mr. Chairman, with your permission over to the board for any questions or concerns, or anything that you might have about how this works.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a comment? I actually wanted to point out that it's, it's important to remember that the numbers we are talking about today are just what we owe, what the town of Templeton owes. Unlike if we were fully insured with a health insurance company, you're paying their overhead, you're paying their profit, you're paying their advertising. Whereas the group we are in, this money that we're looking at, it's just what we owe. We're not paying any of that. That's the beauty of, you know, being self-insured in this, in this sort of situation. So I just wanted to add that in.
Your self-insurance is the cheapest way to buy health insurance. It's been proven over and over, because you're not paying for Blue Cross's TV advertising, or Harvard Pilgrims, or anybody else's. You leave all that behind. You strip out about five percent of your total cost, which is their budget for those things. And then because of your group purchasing of part of your products, you probably save about another five percent. So you're getting somewhere around a seven to ten percent discount by self-insuring in a big group.
I think, off the top of my head, going back about fifteen years, the smallest increase we had was only one year. It was two percent. It was followed the next year by seven percent. And it's probably averaged between seven and nine before we went this direction. So
Yeah, you've had, we've been your advisor for about five, six years now. And you've had some really fun renewals, believe it or not. You had a couple of zeros three, four years ago. No renewal, no increase at all. Those days are long gone and hard to find. Now, will those days come back? Sure. I started doing this back in the eighties, and those are the days of President Clinton, and he appointed Hillary as the health insurance czar, and she was gonna solve all of America's healthcare woes. Didn't happen. But we were looking in those days at thirty-five percent increases on July one. Now, health insurance industry got terrified that the feds were gonna step in and fix it. Oh, would have loved to see that, but they didn't. But just the stuff that they were, what they had scared them, they fixed it themselves. So this stuff cycles. You went through years when you had incredibly favorable, we've got you a negative one year. Your health insurance premium went down one year. But we're right now in an up cycle, and it's a bad one. And in fact, the the governor, you might have heard her on TV, called this the worst health insurance utilization increase in state history. It's worse than back in the eighties. So what's gonna happen? It's gonna cycle again. It's gonna start cycling down. Now, when that will happen, I can't tell you, but it's gonna happen, because it always does. But right now, we're in the soup.
I just had one question, and this, you know, just from my head. I remember I sat here last year on the backside in the audience and was listening to the conversation. And one part I remember distinctly was, we were talking about some part of the plan that if we didn't go over by seventy thousand, we were still in the money, kinda thing. How does that relate to where we are now? Did that, you know, seventy just?
Yeah, so what you had, we have been the advisors to the Mass Strategic Health Group since July first. Prior to that, there was another company advising them. They made what we thought was a fundamental mistake, because they took communities like Templeton, very small, and they gave you a deductible level that's specific, much higher than the forty thousand you have now. So one of, so that's what that was talking about. So what we did is, we changed it. So you are now in a single health insurance policy, a, a stop-loss policy, with Salisbury, Merrimack, and Templeton, because all three of you are small. And your attachment pointer deductible is forty thousand for a single claim. I mean, that saved you a boatload of money, because you're getting a lot of money back. You used to be in a much higher deductible, and that was inappropriate for a community your size. But the problem is, they were trying to, they were taking towns like Franklin with nine hundred employees, and towns like Merrimack with fifty employees, and trying to put them at the same deductible level. That doesn't work. That's crazy. But that's what they did. So, and they did a little bit of differentiation, but not much. We changed the whole thing when we became the broker. So now there's four different plans. And the towns that are huge have a two-hundred-thousand-dollar deductible, and the towns that are smaller have a forty. And it's clearly working, because you're getting a lot of money back. Now, you know, this is insurance. So when the insurance company pays a lot of money to you for a claim, yeah, next year, the premium's gonna go up. But it's an ongoing back-and-forth struggle, and we are experts at this, so we constantly try to find that point where the deductible is set at the right level compared to the premium, and you get back a decent amount of that premium in the form of rebates on, on claims. But it's, 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 uh, it's not for the meek, I can tell you. It's, it's slugging it all big time with the insurance company, because they're all about making money on you. So, you know, they're pushing back, and we're pushing on your behalf. This year, we hit it, just really perfect. And, and we will take some credit for that. But, but you know, it's, 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 it's half science, and it's half art, to be honest, you know, so. Well, the only other thing we really wanted to tell you about was what's going on in general, and so that you don't feel too bad about where you are. So I already told you about what's driving the situation, but get a little more specific. Blue Cross Blue Shield for fiscal twenty-four, so they lag by a year in terms of reporting the Attorney General. But for fiscal twenty-four, they reported a four-hundred-million-dollar operating loss. They announced about two months ago they were laying off eighteen percent of their workforce. Harvard Pilgrim declared a two-hundred-million-dollar operating, operating loss. They didn't announce that they were doing layoffs. The GIC, which insures all state employees in about thirty cities and towns, declared a quarter-billion-dollar deficit for fiscal twenty-five, the year ending June thirty twenty-five. Now, the state is required to bail them out, because it's state employees. The thirty-odd towns that are in there, not many towns, it's mostly cities, they get a break, because the state bails them out. But in July one twenty-six, GIC rates are going up astronomically. And deductibles and copays are probably going up too, because the governor said, yep, we gotta give you the quarter billion, but don't even think July one twenty-six, state's bailing you out. That's going in your premium for next year. So the point of this is, it's bad everywhere. When you see insurance companies like Blue Cross declaring, you know, four-hundred-million-dollar deficits, and Harvard Pilgrim two-hundred, and the GIC a quarter-billion, that's tough everywhere. The Minuteman, the Shoba JPA joint, which is a big purchasing collaborative, is up on the North Shore. They dissolved. They went bankrupt on six thirty twenty-four. The Hampshire County Health Group, which is right west of you, and almost all the towns right out to the New York border, and north to Vermont, New Hampshire, south to Connecticut, did an eighteen percent rate increase on July first twenty-five, and they just did another twenty percent increase on October one. Mid-year rate increases are almost unheard of. In the history of Mass, my forty-seven years, I've heard of it done three times. All three of them have been this year. Hampshire County Group, Town of Oxford, and the Town of Salisbury just did a mid-year rate increase, who are partnered with you, actually. So this is very rare, and Hampshire County just did it on October first. So things are tough everywhere. That's the, that's the basic message. And we threw in a slide here to tell you your top fifty drugs, and everybody's looking. I'm gonna ask you a question for you, see if anybody had a guess.
These are all GLP-1s, or at least a lot of them.
GLP-1s, Zepan and Wegovy. And not by a little, folks. Look at the numbers. They are light years, your highest utilization drugs. And on the left column, you see the names of all the drugs. This is what your employees used in dependence. So these, these will go, these GLP-1 drugs will, are miracle drugs with respect to how they work for diabetes. They've revolutionized diabetes treatment, and they're a pretty good investment. But the bulk of this, probably somewhere around seventy to eighty percent of your GLP-1 utilization is weight management, because scripts exploded when the FDA approved GLP-1. And that happened about twenty months ago. And part of this is your history that started eighteen months ago. So it exploded, and it's not slowing down. The next page, eighteen, what everybody is
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
So a lot of the bigger insurers have dropped GLP-1 drugs. Have, but have any towns seen any labor repercussions because of that?
So the Hampshire County Health Group, seventy-two cities and towns, dropped GLP-1 coverage for weight management on July one twenty-five. No labor repercussions that we know of. The Southeast Mass Health Group, which is, which is on this chart on page eighteen, dropped GLP-1 drug coverage on July one twenty-five for weight management, and so far, no labor pushback. The GIC, which is the biggest group in the state, just announced effective January first, or July one, I'm sorry, that you can still get GLP-1 drugs for weight management, but you must enter into a weight management program, i.e. you can get the drug, but you gotta do the things that we know that keep the weight off, diet and exercise. And if you do those things, you can get the drug. If you don't do those things, you can't get the drug. So what we're seeing on this chart is a drift toward one of two conclusions. July one twenty-six, either the drug is gone, you can't get it for weight management anymore, period. By the way, Medicare, you know, during Medicare, you can't get GLP-one drugs for, for weight management. You never could. So, and that's the biggest insurance system in the country, biggest in the world. So what is, everybody is drifting to is either eliminating them July one twenty-six for weight management or saying you can get it, but you've got to agree to sign into a weight management program. So.
One more question, Mr. Pecos. So being that these health insurance companies, I don't know if NFP is going to know this question, to answer this question or if there's any data out there to answer it. But all these health insurance companies are dropping this, which means this is going to cut into the profit of these drug makers because they're making a boatload of money off of these drugs. So, so does it look like these drug makers may move to either lower prices or create alternatives that do the same thing for less?
Yeah, the, the PBM, the Pharmacy Benefit Management Company that, that works, you know, for all of Mass Strategic is already looking at pricing. Right now, Wegovy is up on the, ones at about a thousand, ones at about thirteen hundred dollars per dose. So if you're taking one of them and it's every once a week, do the math, you're looking at fifty, sixty thousand a year. Many other ones about the same. We're already seeing those price, that price points start to move down. We are being told that four to five hundred dollars per dose by July one won't be unusual. President announced that he's negotiating with companies to reduce the price. You're not going to see that anytime soon. That's probably a year away at least. And you may or may not see it at the local level. It'll be for the federal government system, we don't know if it'll be for us. But then you're already seeing on TV a one-month supply of Wegovy for four hundred dollars. It's already out there. So the drug companies are beginning to react to this. And here's the part that makes me nuts. If you buy Wegovy in Canada or Europe, you pay less than half what we pay. So you know what companies are doing now? They're buying it overseas, bringing it back to America. And that's who's selling it for four hundred dollars a dose on TV if you call them up. It's crazy, but it's happening. So you're going to see a big reaction. The drug companies will whack us all if they can. Up and they'll tell you all sorts of reasons why it's outrageous. However, when the market reacts to this outrage, then they react. So you're seeing a lot of different things. I don't know that by July it's going to settle out and be a lot less, but hey, look, if these scripts drop in half, you're still going to be paying a fortune for it. As a single small town, I mean, look at those numbers, they're astronomical, but at least it will be better. And whether or not GLP-1s stay in the inventory after July one for weight management at all is going to be a matter of the Board of Directors for Mass Strategic. And I can tell you right now, they're not too happy with it. So they may vote them right out and then every member of it won't get it either. Unless you go and buy a separate rider, insurance rider for that. And they've already said the insurance rider is going to be five to ten percent of what your premium is, nobody's going to buy them. But the last section here, I won't really go over, Mr. Chairman, because I think I ran out of time. And James said he never believes in a million years I'd do this in an hour. But the last section, I'll let you read at your leisure. It's really just about what Mass Strategic is doing because they've been around for five years now. And they were self, each town was self-insured on its own. In the, in the face of what's happening in the last thirteen months with health, healthcare costs, they realize each individual community can't be on their own. So they're looking at one of two possibilities. Looking at, um, they've got about thirteen, fourteen members spread across Worcester County and a little bit outside of it. So they're looking at setting up regional joint purchase arrangements where claims would be pulled. So you wouldn't be alone. The group that we're looking at for this area would be you folks, Narragansett. Town of Winchton was interested. There's four or five towns just to the west of here, I don't want to identify them on camera, but they're part of the Hampshire County Group. They're very concerned with what's happening. They're looking for an alternative and we've talked to them about potentially joining with you. So, and then to your east, there's a few towns that are concerned and they're looking to potentially join with you. And believe it or not, Merrimack and Salisbury, who are part of Mass Strategic, but are each insured in their own, they're small, are already buying stop-loss insurance with you, but they're looking at potentially wanting to join with you to pull their claims. So that's one possibility and we'll be back to talk to you in January about that. The other possibility is that Mass Strategic may take the entire membership, that hundred million dollars in premium, tenth of a billion, and pull the claims for the entire group. And then you'd, you'd be part of a group with about three thousand employees and about three to five thousand dependents. So you'd be part of a, your claims would be pulled with a massively huge group. I don't know yet which way the board's going to go on that. But one thing I can tell you is come July first, you will not be required to be on your own anymore. You will have partners and we'll be coming back because the partnership actually requires the vote of the board. It's an inter-ministerial agreement in Massachusetts. All inter-ministerial regionalized, regional affairs events have to be voted by the Board of Selectmen, School Committee, et cetera. So we'll be back to talk about that once the dust settles and we know what the Board of Directors of Mass Strategic wants to do. James is your representative on that Board of Directors, will keep you informed. And Kenny and I love coming back to see you and talking to your employees too. And anytime you want us, we'll be back here.
I guess one question before you go, Kevin. At what point do we get statistically predictable? So if we join with other towns, I, I know it's at some point underwriting.
If you join the, the, not the underwriting industry, let's say you're an accountant versus a CPA. So the underwriting industry is kind of here, the actuaries are kind of up here. Those are the people who get paid gazillions of dollars and figure out these giant trends. So what the actuaries tell us is that if you want to be predictable on your July one rate increase, you've got to be a thousand members or more. Now, if you join with Narragansett, you're probably somewhere around three hundred members. So you're a pretty far distance from being fully predictable. What does that mean? That means when we, when we do the underwriting and we give you your July one rate, that we can't tell you that rate is more than about eighty percent accurate because you're so small. And the, the rule of numbers with groups that are small says you get three bad claims and your claims is up here. And with a group your size, you can easily have three bad claims. Um, one family can get terribly sick, you can have a bad car crash beyond your car insurance. And have a huge medical claim. So the target is to get you partnered with other communities to get you at least at five hundred. We are about ninety percent credible, it's called, predictable. But if we can get you to the next increment, a thousand, you become about ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent credible. So you're, and basically for every increment beyond a thousand, you only pick up a tiny little fraction of more predictability. You know, until you get out to around fifty thousand and then you're like ninety-nine point nine. But we want to get you to that component where you're with a thousand other employees with enough talents to constitute that. And then you're in the sweet spot, then you're really very predictable. And you're sharing any bad claims in any given year with others that are buffering you. So that's the principle of group health insurance. So that's about where we want to try to get you.
Got about a minute before the public hearing, does the board have any questions for NFP?
It's, we're all set. Well, sorry for all the technical jargon and everything, but you've been great and patient, we appreciate it. And like I said, we're happy to come back anytime. It's a pleasure.
Thank you for the info.
And Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy New Year's, Happy Holidays, whatever it is you celebrate, happy, happy. Have a good one.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kevin, thank you, Ken.
One side of the dirt pile. Well, I'll be back with the ugly sweater.
Going to have to send this picture.
Oh, man, I got to tell you, pound for pound, it is one ugly sweater. Take care.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we have about one minute left, I just want to make sure, is the board okay? Do you want to take a vote on allowing me to proceed with the forty-five percent payment? I think we want to get your blessing on that. Maybe, maybe consider that, but it's seven thirty now, Mr. Chairman, so I think you have to open up the public hearing.
Well, we can, uh, we can't start before seven thirty, but we can.
That's seven thirty now by my, by my clock.
Make a motion to allow the town administrator to sign off on the forty-five percent insurance number? Any discussion? On the motion, how would you vote, Mr. May?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Toth?
Yes.
Ms. Bassel?
Yes.
And I go yes. Next item is item D, the Hazard Mitigation Plan, the public hearing. I move to open the public hearing for a Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Second.
Good evening, members of the board.
On motion to open the public hearing, how would you vote, Mr. May?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Toth?
Yes.
Ms. Bassel?
Yes.
And I go yes, public hearing is open thirty-one.
Good evening, members of the board. With, with respect to the procedural requirements here, this is not technically a public hearing nor is there a need, but what we're holding is more of a public forum or a public information session. So if that wording matters, I just wanted to make sure I was clear with that. But if it doesn't, I'll gladly move forward with the presentation. Uh, my name is Jeff Ladrow with the Monticent Regional Planning Commission. I am a local regional planner who serves twenty-two communities. Our planning commission serves Templeton and twenty-one other communities in the Monticent region. We do planning such as comprehensive master planning, transportation planning. Uh, we did Templeton's digital equity planning recently, over the last year. And another type of planning and plans that we create for our communities are what are called hazard mitigation plans. And hazard mitigation planning is something that's done under the state jurisdiction of MIMA, the Massachusetts Emergency Management Agency. And at the federal level, uh, the, the regulatory authority over these hazard mitigation plans and the other body that reviews them in addition to MIMA at the state level is FEMA at the federal level. Uh, those two agencies also administer funding programs to fund the update of hazard mitigation plans, but also disaster and emergency relief funding. And one of the primary reasons why we do this plan and why you have to have an up-to-date plan on file with MIMA and FEMA every five years is so that your town will be eligible for those disaster mitigation or disaster recovery funds should a natural disaster occur where there's a federal or state emergency declaration. In order to be eligible for reimbursement funds under that declaration, you need to have this plan up to date and on file. So that's sort of the long and short of why we do it, why it's important. Uh, with that, I'll move into my presentation here. Um, over the last two years, go ahead, next slide. Over the last two years, we've been working on updating this plan. At the very local level, the Emergency Management Director, Rich Curtis, um, who has a good volunteer team around him as well, sort of leads this process, right? And, uh, Rich Curtis, early on, about two years ago, helped to form a Hazard Mitigation Working Group. And we worked with that group over the two-year period to update this, this previous plan and what I'm going to present here. So tonight's agenda for the presentation, uh, I'm going to give a quick review of the survey results. I'm going to discuss the purpose and primary components of a hazard mitigation plan. And I'm going to go through some key sections and findings of the plan. And then most importantly, uh, I'm going to announce the public review period and public review and comment process and, and period. It will be a fourteen-day period beginning tomorrow when the plan is posted on the town website. And the public will have a plan, an opportunity to download the plan and provide any comment that they might have on the plan. Uh, likewise, uh, this body, this board, other town departments, boards and commissions, employees and stakeholders can comment on the plan during that fourteen-day period as well. More on that when I end the presentation and I'll give some information as to how to make comments and where to find the plan. Next slide, please. Uh, so, uh, I kind of went through these introductions already, um, but I'll, I'll mention again, Rich Curtis, Templeton's Emergency Management Director. Uh, and I want to thank the town administrator, uh, Mr. James Ryan, for having us here today. And, uh, the Hazard Mitigation Plan Working Group, which was made up of various members of town departments, boards and commissions, um, as well as a representative of the select board and some former town employees as well. And then for my group and my team, I just want to say thank you to Glenn Eaton, our executive director of the Monticent Regional Planning Commission, uh, our new director, Bernie Cahill, myself, Jeff Ladrow, Senior Principal Planner, uh, for the Monticent Regional Planning Commission, uh, and the lead and project manager on this, uh, plan update. And then Ryan Dougherty, a former regional planner, uh, who's now with the Town of Westminster as their town planner, and Derek Alfred, a intern who worked on the plan with us. That's our team, next slide, please. So I'm going to jump right into the first item on the agenda, which was the survey results. And, um, the survey was held from October twenty twenty-three to March twenty twenty-four. And, uh, it, the first, one of the first questions asked during the past five years, have you or your household directly experienced a natural disaster or natural hazard? And as you can see here, approximately seventy-five percent of the respondents answered yes. A large majority had over the last five-year period of time. Oh, pardon me, it's the reverse, about twenty-five, thirty percent said no, they had not, and the remainder had. Um, and while that's probably an honest intention of the answer, the reality of it is we have experienced natural disasters here over the last five years. But what this information tells us is a lot of people aren't familiar with what these natural hazards are. And, and so an important part of this plan is to really make the community more aware. Go ahead, next slide, please. And then another question asked, um, of those natural hazards that they did experience, oh, for those who answered yes, what types of natural hazards have you experienced? And it goes on through mostly on the high end was, uh, winter hazards, uh, extreme storms, snow, uh, things like flooding and so on and so forth down the list. Next slide. The, uh, the other one it asked that, uh, um, for, uh, folks that have experienced, um, natural hazard, uh, sorry, but I don't have it right in front of me here. Mr. Ryan, can I get a little help on the first couple of the question there?
It's, uh, well, um, how concerned are you about the falling natural disasters affecting Templeton? Severe winter storms is the first one, where it looks like you have the majority there, followed by extreme cold, infectious disease, uh, other severe weather hurricanes, um, face of species, so on and so forth.
Thank you, sir.
Big one down below, earthquakes.
Yeah, so that, that you says that, you'll see that earthquakes, people aren't really highly concerned. And it sort of makes sense from the data that we evaluate. Earthquakes do occur here in Massachusetts and, and believe it or not, there have been epicenters very right close here within or close to Templeton. Um, however, they're low on the magnitude or Richter scale, two or below. So sometimes, most of the time, we barely feel them or if we do, they don't cause a lot of damage. So that answer would be right, there's a lower level of concern, uh, for that type of a natural hazard. And higher levels of concern are related to things like flooding, severe storms, winter storms that we do experience more of and damages from. Next slide, please. Um, and this next one here asks, uh, about ways that people get their information, how they learn about natural hazard. Um, and this next one here asks, uh, about ways that people get their information, how they learn about natural hazards, uh, and how they learn about, uh, how to become aware and prepare for and become more safe for natural hazards. And, you know, it, it relates to, um, you know, whether they got it from the police department, the fire department, the emergency management director. Uh, are people going to social media, to television, to the internet, to the town webpage? And so the town can learn a lot about how to better connect with the people for awareness on those things from the information here. Go ahead, next slide. And, uh, the opinion, uh, which of the following community sectors are most susceptible to natural hazards? And these are ordered, um, again, I'm gonna ask for your help, Mr. Ryan, if you don't mind, from high to low.
Sure. Uh, human, loss of life and/or injuries, infrastructure damage or loss of bridges, et cetera. Uh, economic, business closures, uh, natural environment damage, uh, governance, ability to maintain order.
So that makes sense, right? We're concerned with our families and our homes and the damages that we might, us as people, might experience. The human sector being the highest. And next slide. Um, and this one here asks of the following community sectors, um, which of the following community sectors are most susceptible to the impacts, right, created? So one, we, we ask what you're concerned with, and then we ask about impacts, and again, if you don't mind.
Yeah, he- again, human loss, infrastructure, economic, natural environment, governance, so the same order.
Here we go. That, that, that's nice when things follow like that and makes sense. Next one. Okay, and, uh, yeah, this one I'm not gonna be able to go through. It's kind of small from where I am.
What community assets are important to you?
Ah.
So first and foremost, looks like fire, police stations, then public water sewer, major bridges and culverts, healthcare facilities, public schools, public forests, conservation, small businesses, agricultural lands, elder care facilities, parks and recreation lands, town hall, government buildings. I think that should be higher on the list. Library, major employers, historical, cultural buildings and private schools.
Perfect. So that gives us an idea not only, uh, what assets people are concerned with, but also gives you an, an idea of the range of assets that actually exist within a community.
Not enough people care about where my office is.
Right, and well, here's to say.
Blow away, no one's gonna care.
You know, it, it is, it is really true, right? I would say that as you go down the list, um, no one seems to be really less important than the, than the other. Um, you know, there are things that we're, we're gonna have to rank and prioritize and put into an order here. Uh, but I think the, the key is that, uh, all of these things are important, right? It's a matter of some are more important than others to certain people. Uh, but in reality, a community can't function without all of its assets working together. And that's why hazard mitigation planning is so important. And next slide. And this one here, it says, how long have you lived in Templeton? So this just wraps up the survey, right? I wanted everyone here to get an understanding of the, uh, the fact that most of the people that took the survey, um, far and away have lived here twenty years or more. So we're not dealing with, uh, a survey that's, uh, not highly reflective of, of local knowledge, right? Um, people that have only been here for a year or two or less than a year. Uh, this is a case where most of the people that took the survey have lived here for twenty years or longer, meaning that they've experienced a lot of what our natural disasters have, have over a year, over that period of time. Yeah, typically you'll see a lot of different things. And, uh, with that, I'll move to the next part of, uh, the agenda. I'm gonna get into a little background process and purpose of hazard mitigation planning. Again, I already talked about a lot of that as part of the introduction, uh, but the previous hazard mitigation plan expired in twenty-twenty-one, uh, meaning it's been out for a couple of years now. And it's important to prepare and update this plan so that the town will be eligible for funding if, God forbid, a natural disaster does happen, like the flooding that occurred in Lemonster. Uh, you've got to be prepared and have a plan on file if something like that were to happen, because you just don't know when natural disasters are going to occur. And, um, the plan is valid for five years, and as we see here, it's typical that it's a year and a half to two years of a planning process. So what that means is that really you're constantly updating your plan. As you go through and you implement actions each and every year, you should be thinking about the next five-year plan and what new actions might go on that plan. And so monitoring and maintaining the plan as you implement it is a really important aspect. You're always planning for the next five-year plan, uh, and the work that you do in that process or progress helps with the update, uh, the next time around. And so again, it makes you eligible for certain mitigation grants that are really important. Um, the process, uh, you form a working group. As I said, Rich Curtis formed a working group, an excellent, well-represented group of people here in Townsend, I mean, Templeton, that were on this working group. And we gather data and we get input from the working group, from stakeholders, from the various town departments. Uh, we hold an initial public meeting, which is more of an informational meeting about hazard mitigation planning. That's the point in time at which we opened the survey. We gather survey information from the public. So you, you get a sense that this is a public process throughout. And then as you get close to the end, you're drafting the plan, you're putting together and taking into account these recommendations to build strategies, uh, to update goals and identify and update actions for the plan. Some of the actions get carried forward from the previous plan, if they're ongoing or if they weren't completed. Uh, others are new actions that are important that have been, been identified in recent years. And so with that, uh, you end up with a mitigation strategy and an action plan as the final outcome of this plan. Um, and then you host a meeting like this to present, uh, that plan and those goals and actions as part of it. Um, and you seek public comment, again, the public process. And finally, um, you submit the draft, uh, plan for review, uh, to MIMA and then on to FEMA for their approval. Uh, and with that, um, FEMA will initial, eventually issue a notice to adopt the plan. And that's the time at which the select board votes on the plan and approves it, not necessarily tonight. This is your opportunity to review and comment. But in about a month or a month and a half's time, when FEMA is completed with their review, they'll issue a notice to adopt of the town, and then the plan will be adopted and formally in place. Uh, and I'll, I'll reiterate that right at the end, but I have a few more slides here. Next slide. Uh, these are just the major components of a plan. I'm not gonna go through each and every one of them, but we talk about things like flood zones, critical facilities, local hazards, uh, and they're all in the plan. And I encourage everybody to go in and take a look and, and, and read through it, the community profile, section three, and then section four. Next slide. Uh, section four, hazards and vulnerabilities, and then section five, the mitigation strategies and actions that I talked about. And then the final kind of component of a plan is that plan maintenance that I also mentioned, where you're continually evolving and updating your plan as you go, so that you're prepared, uh, to, to update your plan when the next five-year cycle comes around. And, uh, with that, next slide. So really quick, just section one is a, is a basic introduction, a lot of what I've talked about here, why plans are important, why hazard mitigation is important. Section two defines the planning process that I've described here today and how important public input is and having a local working group with local knowledge. Uh, next slide. Um, here's an example. This is the, you can see we had a robust working group with many people involved. Uh, that's a table in the plan. It lists those who were involved. And it also notes those that were involved in this plan, that were either former, uh, employees or former border committee members. And it makes that note for a reason. One, to thank them for their input if they're no longer here, but also so that the town knows, uh, if those people were on this working group and they're no longer here with the town, it's really important to get the new representative of that border commission on to this working group. Because the working group, while they don't meet monthly, they probably will meet quarterly or at least biannually, uh, to go, to go through and help to maintain and in, implement this plan. So it's important to keep this, uh, working group at least semi-active throughout the process. With, uh, Rich Curtis being the lead, I, I'll mention the Emergency Management Director. Um, this is just some of the community profile stuff, and you can see that and learn more as you read through the pa- plan. Things like land use and population demographics and things of that nature make up section three. Next. Uh, section four, we get into hazards and vulnerabilities. Some of these pictures are from the, uh, the hurricane and flood of thirty-six, which, uh, affected the region as a whole and affected the state as a whole. But really, uh, uh, there was a local impact to that storm here with flooding in Baldwinville on the Lower Otter River and on the Millers River. Uh, substantial, significant flooding that it's shown, uh, in those images of Baldwinville from nineteen thirty-six, uh, to where really the, the, the main, uh, area of the village is flowing. It's the street, it's not the river. When you first glance at it, you think you're looking at the river, you're not. You're looking at the street that's at the upper level through the commercial district of, of Baldwinville there on the village center. Uh, so those pictures were telling and impressive. Uh, I put them there. Horrible memories for the people that are still alive that experienced it. Um, however, you know, really we need to learn from it and realize that a hazard like that can happen. And it's not much different than what happened in Lemonster in twenty-twenty-three. Uh, so to be prepared and to get things out of the flood zone, um, is really important. Uh, next slide. And, uh, I'll go, I'll just dr- drop through these slides and encourage people to look at them. This po- this presentation will be posted. But this just talks about some of the major hurricanes, tornadoes, severe storms and wind events. Next slide. Uh, gives an example of the hurricane of thirty-eight, uh, which, like the hurricane and flood of thirty-six, also caused severe wind der- damage and flooding here in this area, the Millers River, the Gardner, Templeton, Baldwinville area in particular. And this gives a little bit of a local story, um, so I included it here. Next slide. Uh, flooding, flooding is a major concern along the Millers River and Lower Otter River. Um, you know, we think of flooding from rain events, but flooding can also be a result of ice jam backups. And there's a part of the plan that talks about instances of ice jams. And believe it or not, statewide, region-wide, this particular area, the Lower Otter River and the Millers River below here and, and a couple of points upstream of here in Winchandon and Priest Brook that comes in just upstream of where the Millers and Otter River meet. Um, the, those areas have been known and have a substantially higher rate of ice jams than other areas throughout the state, partly to do probably with our climate and being up on this high plateau. We get ice storms, we get a lot of cold weather and we get that severe ice and our, our rivers and streams are high gradient. And a lot of times the channels are confined. These lead to these ice jam backups. So there's a section of the plan that talks about the risks and vulnerabilities, uh, through Baldwinville and along the Millers River and parts of Templeton there, uh, of related specifically to ice jams. And another one to think about is after, with all the drought we've been having lately, uh, flash flooding is a real serious concern with flooding that is not only, you know, you, you don't consider flooding to happen within a really dry period of time, but in only, with only a few hours of rain, after a summer-long or years-long period of drought, when the ground isn't, uh, in a condition that it can absorb that water or flow, you're gonna get overland sheet flow and, which could lead to flooding. So drought can also be a major part of flooding vulnerability and risk that you wouldn't maybe otherwise think about. Next slide. Uh, blizzard of seventy-eight, the December two thousand and eight ice storm, the Halloween nor'easter of twenty-eleven. Uh, you know, various blizzards and winter storm Nemo. Um, we're in an area here, as you can see by that map, that is really susceptible to severe winter storms. And it's no doubt that that ranked high on Templeton's list within this plan. You'll see that, uh, severe winter storms is the number one rated hazard as we rate the hazards. Next slide. Speaking of hazard ratings, this is the table, uh, within the plan, within section four that sums it all up. And all of these hazards and the different types of, uh, uh, occurrences or, or impacts of the hazards have all been scored and rated by the Hazard Mitigation Working Group. And a, a number generated on the far right-hand side to score them. So with that, you have your hazards prioritized by the level of concern. Um, and winter storms is, is ranking highest, and I think flooding follows behind that. Uh, so take a dive into this table, uh, when you review the plan. Next slide. Uh, with that, after you come out of section four, you're evaluating your, your hazards and your vulnerabilities, we're then creating a mitigation strategy to ultimately come up with an action plan, right? A list of goal, of goals and actions that we need to implement in order to prepare ourselves, uh, for these hazards that could occur. And, uh, we have approximately twenty actions identified. Uh, the ones that are highlighted in green are new actions. Uh, the ones in white have been carried forward from previous versions of this plan, either from two versions ago or from the last version, um, or from the, um, CRB, Community Resilience Building MVP plan that was done, uh, by Templeton in twenty-twenty-one, I believe. Um, and so this is, uh, next two slides, as you can just kind of scroll through. These are the lists of those actions and take a look at those, uh, and we're, we're interested to see what people think. And, uh, we will be priority ranking those hazards with the working group as our final exercise of this plan process. And the next two weeks review, as the public's giving us their feedback and comment, I'll be working with the Hazard Mitigation Working Group to rank and prioritize those actions. Okay. The final section is plan maintenance. I've talked a lot about keeping the plan updated, but we have a whole section in here that, uh, gives kind of a procedure, uh, and helps the town really to guide them in that process, list dates and when we, how often and how frequent we think the hazard mitigation working group should meet. And we even go so far as to recommend the things they should do at various meetings and at different times of the year over the next five-year period to prepare them for the next plan and to make that process as easy and straightforward as they can. And we also provide a tool, uh, we call it an IMAT tool, uh, but it's a, it's a, basically it's a min- mitigation monitoring and assessment tool, uh, where all of those twenty-plus actions are listed and we have individual action cards listed. Uh, depending on those cards can sort of be assigned almost as a work ticket to the responsible party or department whose, uh, goal or, or whose job it is, role it is to implement that individual action. And so that, that works as kind of a, a guidance tool for helping the working group maintain the plan and implement actions over time. Um, and MRPC is only an email and a phone call away and a short twenty-minute ride down the road or, or here to Templeton to help you with through that process as we go. One of the good things about working with your local, um, municipal, uh, your local regional planning agency is that we can help the municipalities, uh, directly throughout the process. Uh, whereas a consultant, when their job is done, their job is sometimes done. Uh, we're here for you and working with you on other projects, um, always, so you don't have to feel alone throughout this process. And we're, we're happy to, uh, help you not only do the plan, but implement it as we go. And, uh, with that, uh, the, uh, next steps I talked about already. We're gonna finalize this plan. We're gonna take public comments, implement them into the plan, and we're gonna submit for review to MIMA and FEMA. And FEMA will then issue a, uh, notice to adopt the select board at that time. I'm guessing probably sometime in February, we'll receive a notice to adopt, and you can hold a quick meeting, uh, to adopt the plan, the final plan. Uh, I will insert a copy of that vote, the resolution, into the plan. And I will give a final printed version of the plan, uh, probably two copies of it to the town. Uh, one for Rich and the EMD, uh, department and one for the, uh, town select board or here in the clerk's office, where we choose to keep it. Um, and, uh, when that time comes, let me know. I'll gladly insert the resolution after the vote, the signed resolution and finalize the plan in print and, and in digital copy. And, uh, that, that will be that. Uh, we just then let FEMA know that it's been adopted. They get the proof. And, uh, we then begin to work on implementing the plan and, uh, thinking about the next, uh, iteration of this, of the update. And go ahead, I have, now I wanna really focus on how do you make public comments? So, uh, beginning tomorrow, the plan will be posted sometime mid to late morning. The plan will be posted on the town webpage. The public can go on to the webpage, www dot templeton ma dot gov under the news section of the homepage. And within the news section, that plan will be posted, easily accessible. And a copy of this presentation will also be posted either there or on the EMD, uh, webpage at some point shortly after that, so that the public can look at this presentation as well. Um, and as is announced at every meeting, uh, this is also recorded, uh, by TCTV and available for review that way through their channel and YouTube channel as well. Comments can be sent to Rich Curtis, Templeton's Emergency Management Director at rcurtis@templetonma.gov. Uh, please submit comments, uh, by email, uh, to, to Rich Curtis within the two-week period, the fourteen days beginning tomorrow, and I believe ending on the twenty-third of December, uh, by the end of that, that day. And, uh, if, uh, anybody wants to submit comments in writing, the, the town would not refuse them and will accept them. Email is obviously the most convenient, but if anybody does want to submit them in writing, uh, the same process would hold. Uh, submit them, uh, to your town administrator's office, care of Rich Curtis, um, in the, it was, in the Emergency Management Department. And those comments will then get to Rich and he'll get them to me and, uh, our planning team at MRPC to make the updates. So with that, I think I, that's everything. The next slide wraps it up here. Uh, I wanna thank everybody. Uh, again, there, uh, just for the one final time, the webpage and, uh, Rich's email are posted here. And final slide is just, uh, some information. Ready.gov is a place that residents of Templeton can go to, uh, to get hazard readiness information, uh, and I encourage everyone to check it out at ready.gov. Uh, it is a federal webpage administered in part by FEMA and other government partners. Uh, but there's a lot of useful resources on there for residents, uh, and businesses alike. Thank you.
Thank you. Any member of the board have a question? He says a public hearing, so anyone in the audience have a question or comment for?
I'm so glad that this was done. Thank you to Rich Curtis for getting the grant because.
I'm so glad that this was done. Thank you to Rich Curtis for getting the grant because towns are in violation of this. Templeton is pleadingly so. Thank you to Jeff and MRPC and all the hard work that Rich Curtis put into it. This is a very, a very good thing for Templeton, you know. We're blessed to get this done and have the money to pay for it. Believe me, I hear a lot of other towns doing, are looking and still in violation, they're in violation. Thank you.
Yeah, and the funding is competitive and not easy to get, so I commend again. I I second that. I commend Rich for making the effort to go out and get it. And I also want to uh, again commend the uh, Hazard Mitigation Working Group. I- i- if you look at that list, it was really a robust group of people here in Templeton. And Templeton takes emergency management uh, and public safety pretty seriously. Especially for the size, small size of the town, more so than other bigger cities even. And so I commend the town for that and I thank the working group for their really high level and dedicated commitment. Of such a a good sized group for such a small town. It really helped the process and it shows the commitment here. So yeah. Thanks to the the working group and to Rich. And uh, thanks to the select board for having us and putting a member of. Uh, or two on that committee and working group. And uh, thank you to the new town administrator uh, for having us here today. And we look forward to uh, finalizing this plan and wrapping it up uh, over the next couple of weeks. Send your feedback back, please, for the public comment. And um, we'll we'll get it off for review and and finalization. And uh, yeah, thank you all.
Just want to ask something about the working group. There's a couple of members that are there that are no longer on the select board. How does that work?
If they're still on the working group, they're.
The working group is is now pretty much done with their responsibilities. And so um, that would be a good question, actually, if those uh, if those people still want to give their feedback and comment on the plan. Um, their position on the working group isn't, I don't think, uh. You know, dependent upon them still being a member of another border committee, but thinking long term. Um, we're we're at the end of this process. There are no more working group meetings. Uh, but the feedback from the working group will help us rank those actions, but so will your comments and input. We welcome the board here and other town committees and departments to look at that uh, action plan. In section five, the end of section five, and help us to rank and prioritize those actions. Um, and moving forward is where the notation is made on the bottom of that table. Uh, with members that are no longer participating, um, the town would want to assign a newer member. Um, to the next iteration of that working group. Uh, once this plan is finalized. Uh, that that working group will still meet, like I said, whether it be quarterly or twice a year or at least once a year that group will meet. And so having that good representation on with current members of those bodies would be a good thing.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further?
Just one quick comment, if if I may, Mr. Chair. Um, I love the plug for ready dot gov. Unfortunately, we just watched the government shutdown where a lot of these programs you could not access. So for those in TV land watching, don't delay, don't hesitate. Log into it, get the checklist. They're one and two page, real easy, no brainers to go through. They help you line this up. And I don't want to see us go into another continuing resolution, but reality is we may. So it it benefits us to be prepared and take the steps and moving forward.
Yeah, that's great advice. Thank you. Um, and yeah, same, I say it again, do that, go on. Check out the resources. They're downloadable, you know, it's checklist. There's there's different resources that you can download, guidance documents and things and. Very much worth it and uh, very much worth going through that checklist and and truly being prepared, making sure. That you have what you need for certain things. So yeah, encourage everybody to do it and uh, reach out to your emergency management director. Uh, reach out to uh, your local, you know, planning commission and if you need any help with that or guidance or you're looking for other information, we're happy to provide it.
All right. At this time, I would move to close the public hearing on hazard mitigation plan.
I got.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? On the motion to close the hearing, how would you vote? Mr. May?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Toth?
Yes.
Mr. Vessel?
Yes.
And I'll, and we are. Have a public hearing. Next item concerns municipal representative.
Thank you for coming, Jeff.
Thanks.
Um, yes, that's me. So um, in your packets is just um, part of the uh, the regulation. Um, CMR something forty one oh four. Um, and I just I printed off a page. So this regulation is on um, Desi's website and I printed off. Just part of it. The the short of it is, the superintendent of schools um, realized that um. Uh, the member towns are supposed to have a representative on um, uh, bargaining negotiations. So with with the. The various unions that make up the uh, Narragansett Regional School District. And so via this regulation, the uh, municipalities have to choose a representative. Uh, we had met previously to um, determine that, but um, this regulation is worded strangely. Um, if you read it one way, uh, my interpretation was that in the meeting that we had previously. Uh, with the superintendent, Jeff was there and um, representatives from Phillips and were there. Um, I thought we were in compliance with open meeting law because it it wasn't a public body, it wasn't a quorum of a public body. Um, but apparently there are, there is um, case law or or something to that effect where. The meeting that we have to have soon, uh, and that I think we're scheduling for January sixth. Is that the superintendent calls a meeting and they're gonna post the meeting and it's gonna be a meeting that's basically gonna say a meeting of. The superintendent, you know, James Ryan, Jeff Bennett and Phillips and representatives, and that's gonna be the public body. So it's. It's a quirky um, sort of regulation. Um, it just has, so the meeting just has to be posted like a public meeting. But we also thought it would be clean that the board officially vote to appoint their representative. Um, uh, so that then the two towns can decide. So Phillips and has theirs. And so uh, this board can appoint someone. Um, I would like to be your representative on the committee naturally. So if the board would like me to uh, represent the town on that committee uh, with the school district. Um, you could take a vote today to appoint me.
And just for clarification, I will be at that meeting to to vote. For someone to represent Templeton. And I think the town administrator is just asking for the board. Uh, and this involves uh. Collective bargaining agreement essentially.
Yes.
We get, you only get one vote, but it's. It's the law, it's a procedure, you're supposed to do it. Uh.
So between myself and Mr. Bennett and the representatives from Phillips, then we will have to decide amongst us who is gonna be the one representative.
Of both towns.
Of both towns. Um, but we think it would be clean if you voted your choice so that when we go, we know who we're.
Right, I could make a motion to vote. For the administrator with the backing of the board. Uh, I have done this before. Um, entered a meeting and and we voted. Back in thirteen or fourteen. Uh, so it's, it is a quirky little thing. It's. I believe, I think we did it at a school committee meeting, but it doesn't matter. And the town administrator is just asking for the board vote. So when I go to the meeting, I can make a motion to have town administrator represent. Templeton in in those negotiations.
I assume you want me to do it as opposed to someone from Phillips, and so that's kind of what we're asking for today. We don't have to.
Yes.
You're you're the bigger town and um, I have ten years experience doing this exact work. Um, and I'm willing to do it. So I have a good working relationship with the superintendent. I like working with him. So. If the board would like to appoint me, um, uh, you may do so.
Mr. Chair? Let me make a motion that we appoint James Ryan for the meaningful representation. Um, for contract negotiations through the Narragansett Regional.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing now on the motion, how would you vote, Mr. May?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Toth?
Yes.
Ms. Vessel?
Yes.
Yeah, well, yes. Okay, the next item was going to be a joint meeting with the Parks and Recreation Commission, and this just involves um. Massachusetts General Law. Chapter forty five, which is section one. Is the definition, it says in this chapter, town shall not include city. In this chapter, parks shall include a city, a town. Common dedicated to the use of the public or appropriated to such use without interruption for a period of twenty years. So. Since we have Parks and Recreation Commission, uh. Use of the common has been coming in front of the select board and. We, there is town bylaw that says the select board oversees town property, but. When you have parks commissioners, then. And and town meeting approved, accepting Massachusetts General Law, chapter forty five. Uh, and special legislation for Parks and Recreation Commission. Um, a question has been raised by myself uh, as a board member and uh, Mr. May. Several times to emails to the town administrator, coming to the board, et cetera. Uh, so I wanted to have a joint meeting with them to ask the Parks Commission if they want to oversee. The town commons, in which case, like the Lions Club, the Historical Society, and they have multiple, anything that goes on on the common. Areas uh, taken to the fire commissioners versus the select board. They had asked them to be on two meetings ago. Uh, they couldn't get a quorum and then again tonight, so. Uh, I don't know if they're gonna want to take on this because. The Lions Club people want to have an event at the common, you're gonna go use it's. Yeah, it's gonna be October thirty first and they come to be the first meeting in October. I mean, we're gonna do, we won't have a quorum, so. That was the reason for this on here, just to clarify this and to ask them if they wanted to. Have oversight of the common or see that to the selectmen as it has historically been before we actually accepted. Massachusetts General Law, chapter forty five and had park commissioners. So, uh. I guess we can just push this off to a meeting.
Oh, Mr. Chair, if I may, um, if the board would like me to ask them a particular question, because right now, if there is an event on the common. There's a form that gets filled out and it comes to my office and I approve the event, correct? Is that how we're doing it?
There there's been a, yeah, property use form and there's certain events that were deemed town sponsored. So the town administrator could sign off and approve them. Other events came to the board. And the board would vote to approve them. Uh, and that's the, one of the things that we would have to address. If the park commissioners want to. Have authority over the the town commons for the Massachusetts General Law that covers Fox commissions.
So would the board like me to ask them the question and they could take it to their next meeting and give give us an answer that way? Um, it seems like a fairly simple, simple enough question.
If, you know, if they they could meet and vote, uh, whether they want to decide it, uh, we just. Is this just something we need to have, you know, clarification on?
Correct. I think I can handle asking, asking them that question. So I will, I will happily do that.
Is there any, uh, is there a consensus on the board for why would the town administrator to ask them? Is, it seems like that might be the most efficient. Way to do it with this, like I can, this like three tries.
Mr. Chair, I would just like to say that they had opening of basketball, they had a movie on Saturday. And they had the parade and the tree lighting, so it's probably why we didn't see them tonight with their quorum. Um, but I think it'd be more efficient to send it to their meeting and have James write to them and ask them. They're extremely busy.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I might, I just have a question called concern. Um. Because we did and the town did accept chapter forty five. As it is, um, with the exclusion of section two, which is the voting for. Having elected officials rather than appointed officials. Um. Do we have that option? Is my question because where does it give them the authority to relinquish that duty to us? And. I I just don't see it. I see that the law just says that that's under them. I don't know that if it is a choice. That's my concern.
And there's, there's two parts to that because we have a bylaw that cites that was.
State law overrides by law, though.
It's not that addressed.
Right.
You know. Regarding this issue.
Right, no, I I I agree with you there, but in that regard, the state law, chapter forty five, would override our bylaw.
Yeah, it's, that's one of those things that, you know, it's never been fixed.
I, I do, Mr. Chair.
I believe you can do it. If they, if they vote to do it that way.
Do you have one thing to point out about the commons? Um, there is a title, there's a title and the title does say that the select board, it is specifically lined out. Um, Hooton Park, in order for it to be changed, it had to be a town vote to take um. To take the, I think the senior center had been put in a previous vote, so I didn't know if that would be an issue. Um, because the town common title, um, the deed says, um, the select board oversees that particular property. Whereas the other properties that the Parks and Rec Commission um, oversees specifically says on those titles that they're um. They're supposed to take care of those properties. I didn't know if that is um, that comes into play at all.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I guess to Ms. Graves' point, if the if the common was accepted as a, as a, as a park. Um, years ago when it was built or or what have you, I mean, I'm sure the common's been around a long time, right? But um, if it was accepted as a park, then because you accepted that chap, uh, that part of the law. Um, the Parks and Rec Commission would have dominion over it. If it's not, then the select board would. So I guess, I guess that, you know, that would be the information that we would need. I would assume it's a park, but not supposed to assume.
I think, isn't that what the chapter forty five, section one that Jeff just read states that the common is?
No, there you go.
Yeah.
My, excuse me, Mr. Chair, my, my concern was just because of the Hooton Park, um, Park in Otter River. Um, in order for Parks and Rec to actually, even though they had section forty five saying that they were in charge of it. The town had to take a vote on the floor recent, um, a few years back or I don't know the exact year in order to change the deed. Um, the provision so that Parks and Rec could take care of that park. With this particular deed for the commons, the commons still states pre on the deed that the select board are in charge of it. So I mean, I guess we could, we could vote for it, but does yet, does the town folks still have to vote on the floor? In order to accept the change if the select board does the change, you know. Just like just the other park. Um, that was my only concern. One is just the way the deed for the town for the commons is written. It's very old and it, I seen it. It does say the select board is in charge of the commons, even if the common is technically a park.
There is also a section of the common in front of the Templeton Center Fire Station that the deed says it's the. Uh, Common Improvement Society. Um, and and that goes back when the, they were building the elementary school. They wanted to put a storage shed over there and they asked the board for it and. Tom Harrington, they did it. There was a bunch of research done on the title and where they wanted to put it, they couldn't put it there. Uh, since then, uh, that group's mailing address, interestingly enough, is at Houghton Park. Used to be the old uh, Otter River Schoolhouse, then it was Town Hall. Until it was molding it and the board of health. until it was molding it, and the board of health had to shut it down, and then it burnt down. So, there's some funny stuff, you know, that goes on. But they, that group, the Common Improvement Society, wrote a letter giving the board the authority to approve things for that section of the common. Like, right now, where the Lions Club Christmas tree stays set up, is on that chunk that is, according to the deed, belongs to the Common Improvement Society. Because chunks of common was given by different people in different chunks. Like, in front of the Crowes, like, fifteen feet from their front door is town common. Where they park is town common. But, and far that driveway goes through, the lawn part goes through the common. That, that's town common land. And then there's the stretch in front of the library that has, like, three old wells on it. They're still there, usable, but been opened in, I don't know when, but it was asked if we could, that they, town wanted to get rid of something, and no. It was like moving the World War, one, World War II monuments. I asked the question, and I thought I was getting hung, but, because there's just some of that stuff that people, I guess, respectfully, the old timers said, you know, people that grew up around here, they'll, they'll leave it alone, so. But, again, this is just something that's, uh, one way or another, we can get this straightened out to see. I, I, I know there's a way to do this, there's always a way to do everything within the law. So.
So I could, I'll be happy to ask them that question. You know, I would say that if, if they choose not to act on it, so to Mr. May's point, maybe legally, you know, it's, it's their responsibility, but if they decide that they've got a lot going on, and they prefer to have us handle it as we've been handling it, their decision not to act means, in theory, you could act, and as long as they don't challenge it, you know, it's just, you know, more the Select Board just managing the, managing the events that go on. So, suppose if they don't wanna, you know, take on that responsibility, that would be fine for the board to just act. But maybe they will, so I, I'll be happy to send it over to them.
Mr. Chair, they do have that system where they're taking it in, the FMX system that they pay for to take in applications that the Select Board Office is on it as well when the applications come in, so that's something.
Mr. Chair, they do this, we're with maintenance.
Well, the Park Commissioners have oversight of, like, playgrounds and things, but that's what, it's like, we have oversight over this town hall and stuff, but Select Board doesn't have lawn mowers and pickup trucks. That's why we have a Building and Grounds Department, too, because you don't wanna be, especially now in economic times, the way they are, and budgets tight and stuff, you know, double, having two entities to, you know, mow grass on something, that's why we have a Building and Grounds Department. They have to truck the trailers, the personnel, even though, like, there's only two of them, but that would be a, just another decision, but, like I said, they have oversight, but they, they don't have to do the, the maintenance, so that's covered in this. On the next item on the agenda, item G, the reporting requirements, town administrator.
Mr. Chair, so I just wanted to circle back about one of the topics that we discussed during the Select Board's workshop, and that it was suggested by the facilitator, Mr. Nutting, that the board considered the amount of reporting requirements that currently exist, so i.e. the weekly report and the quarterly reports by the department heads. He essentially, and what I'm asking of the board is for you to consider an abolishment of the weekly reporting requirement, and asking if you'd be willing to consider having the department heads come in twice a year as opposed to four times a year. Because that, you know, twice a year reporting, that's in addition to budget meetings, and then, you know, summoning for occasional things that come up, like when the treasurer was here, talking about foreclosures and whatnot. And so I wanted to circle back with the town on that requirement, and see where the town, where the board was feeling as, as it comes to the, those reporting requirements, as we discussed at the workshop.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I am fine with the weekly report as it comes out every week. I get a lot of information about it, we voted on it, we had a lot of discussion over it on our agendas, and then we approved to have a weekly report. I feel like it's, it's working fine, and we get a lot of information. There's been some things that I've only gotten from the weekly report as a select person or just a resident in general, so I was happy to have it. And then the quarterly report, I am, I'm fine with a couple of times a year for them to come in versus, was it four times they come in? I understand they're very busy getting things done, the different department heads and stuff, so having the weekly gives me more information. But getting rid of the, the, the weekly and cutting back the quarterly, I feel like I'm not gonna be informed as a Select Board member or a town resident, as much as I would like to be.
One item on the, regarding the quarterlies, in the financial management policy, the finance team is required to do quarterly reports, as long, as well as the monthly expenditure reports. So unless we change that policy, that would, the finance stuff, quarterlies, would, would have to stay. My thoughts on the weekly, since that November third meeting, and I went back and read a bunch of them, and I noticed in a lot of departments, the, the same thing kinda happened that happened with the all-boards meeting. It started out with a bang, and you get information on things that were happening, but then, and you'd notice that some departments, and I know Mr. May has, has noticed this as well, because he's, when he was not on the board, he informed the office, and, you know, pointed out that some departments, it's almost like they just report the same thing every week, for months at a time. And other departments, like the town clerk, to the assessors, it's a, a cycle thing, because March one to, first week in April or something, the town clerk is preparing for a town meeting, dog licenses is the big thing, and then there's the period for the assessors when abatements come in, the motor vehicle excise tax, and, you know, quarterly thing, it, it happens, like, it's, it's a cycle. A lot of departments, you, you really don't get anything new from. I've noticed that the police department now, they just, he just reports electronic law of what's happened. Whereas before, you used to get a, a write-up from each department, and yeah, you could find out some, you know, new stuff that happened, like, oh, there was a fire, or if there was this. The town administrators section was if, you know, something new happened on your policy, this, that, the other thing, but some departments, again, they just, it's like, they were just recycling. It's.
To, to your point.
I'm not sure if it's still, it's still there.
So to your point, Mr. Chair, I think that's the thing with weekly, when it comes to certain departments, you know, a lot of what accounting does is repetitive, with accounts payable and AP, and, you know, she could put bullets in there about, you know, I, I did this many journal entries, but that doesn't really add a lot of information, valuable information. The stuff that ends up being valuable is, for example, when they set the tax rate, which I mentioned in my report today, and we got emails about. You know, again, you mentioned some of the stuff about assessing, like, you know, quarterly, or maybe more, things will pop up that they'll wanna announce. You also have, you know, with, with library and COA, they plan events out fairly far. So, a, a lot of this stuff, I think, would be captured with a more robust town, town administrator's report, and, you know, when I signed on, before I knew we had weekly reports, I was, I was planning on sending the board regular updates, I don't know if it'd be exactly weekly, but regular updates in addition to my town report, but I haven't had to do that because of the weeklies. I think, I, I think a natural sort of notification to the board, either through town administrator reports, and then some updates I would probably send you, would compensate from the lack of weekly reports, and would contain more valuable information. So instead of seeing the same thing with police and accounting, and probably the treasurer's office, when something important happens in those departments, I would capture it, and so eventually you would see that information. So, you know, and I think too, I've only been here ten months, so, you know, I haven't had really the opportunity to have a department heads meeting, because you do something like that once a month, but there's been less of a need for it, because I saw the police chief today, I saw Bob today, I spoke to Amber at length today, even saw her assistant accountant, all in, all in one day, and it was mostly in the morning. And so I, I'm seeing these people so much, plus they're submitting weekly reports, and so I, I think what we'd have without the weeklies is we'd have more, less frequent but more value-adding activities that would allow me to communicate something to you, either in a town administrator report, which you could get twice a month, or with roughly weekly updates. Maybe I sent something, because you know I work on Friday, I think you all realize that. I probably said something to you, you know, a little short something, weekly. And so you, you wouldn't, you wouldn't see, you know, oh, yeah, they process payroll and AP, or so-and-so had this many, you know, customers at the counter, you know, this week. I think you might get more valuable information when you get reporting.
Well, I have the one, Mr. Chair, from last week, that we just came out, and there was some things that, that stuck up to me, that we just got a report from Mr. Ryan in my emails, that if I didn't get this report, I, I wouldn't have known. And, like, the census, apparently they're working on the census. I mean, he told us about the tax rate. There were some meetings that I didn't know that we had some meetings. There's some other things going on with some of our other boards and departments that I wouldn't have known about. I find it a useful tool. I mean, every department head is going to have to update the town administrator with the information one way or another. So if he shares the information, it's coming directly from them, what they're up to, what's going on, that various departments with us directly, if it's to the town in general as a weekly report, or if it's through an email in general, of what that data comes in, and what, what's going on. Yes, I, I, I do agree with saying tedious, I mean, they do a warrant, you do a thing, those things. It takes time to get people to realize they, you know, they just wanna, if they don't have anything, don't send it in, if there wasn't anything but the regular day-to-day business. But knowing if we've served six, uh, students, children have come to Storytime to know how the, that's going on, you know, or what kind of craft is going on, it is going to be something that will have to be sent, sent in one way or another to James, or a phone call, that our office will have to get that information from. Some of the information he gave us today at the town administrator section of our meeting was probably phone calls or stuff that came from this that was sent in by the different departments. So, I mean, I don't, I think it's a, I mean, we've, I've heard from different departments that have do this, so many of them don't have a problem with sending it in, plus they keep those kind of logs anyway, on their activities from their staff. I just feel like it's a useful tool, as, as I use as a select woman, and I think that some of the residents do enjoy having update, almost like a news weekly, to know what the town is up to with their taxpayer dollars. And we already voted on it.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I look at this as a, I understand the spirit and intent of our consultant when he was in. I heard what Mr. Ryan had to say. I'm gonna look at this in a slightly different light. This is the opportunity for department heads to showcase and highlight what their department has done for the town. To Ms. Graves' comment, what has this done to benefit the taxpayer? That is important information. Maybe not always weekly, maybe a bi-weekly. Quarterly reports, yes, some are cyclical, some are required by law, by statute. Other ones, it's kind of a, a waste of time for somebody to sit there. We get it electronically, I have a packet, I sit and read through it, and my quarterly report, we did this, we, I, I can read, I don't need it to be read to me. Brief it by exception if it's necessary, or if we have a question, we can ask it directly. That would save a little bit of time, and some of these meetings that run a little bit long, and it's not any one department in particular, it's just, it's been the nature of the beast, it's how we've always done it, but it might be time to make some changes.
Mr. Chair? On, on top of that, sometimes there is repetition, it's in, it's in the weekly, and then it would be put on the, now it's the news section, over on the right, down at the bottom, scroll down, and if there's something big, it's there. It's also in the weekly report. The tax rate being set, and the tax recap sheet, you know, being done and stuff. I believe I emailed that to the board. I, I, I signed up for this stuff, I don't even remember when or how, whatever. Get all the stuff in the DLS, it was, you know, your tax rate has been set, Templeton, Boston. So I emailed that out to the board, posted it online, several places. So, and to go on, like, maybe bi-monthly, I believe that was a recommendation of the DLR, the Financial Review of March of 2021. It was, it was not in the, the first one done in 2009, but it was a, it was a recommendation, or, or thought from DLR, of moving it from, from weeklies to, like, a bi-weekly thing. Because it, a lot of departments just becomes repetition, and, you know, property tax payments are due this quarter, you know, that's what's, you know, the assessors get questions on this. Treasurer, the collectors, that's what they're doing. In March, it's town clerk is dog licenses, and then June or whatever, it's report in town meeting, town election stuff, because they brought all of that to the state. It's, it's, I don't know.
To your point, you know, I definitely hear what you're saying, but I also look at this last, our last business meeting, we had a citizen comment that information is difficult, sometimes impossible to navigate to and locate. I know we get challenges on the town's website as well, we can work there. But I'm fairly tech-savvy, I can get through it, but there are some boards and commissions, I can't find any of their documentation, yeah, meeting minutes, non-existent for a couple of boards. I'm not gonna call them out by name, but, whoa, pretty gutsy move, but it's a bad move. So that might be one time where some of these reports actually do have some merit.
And not all of them, not all the boards, committees, or et cetera, you know, report. And there are multiple times where departments still report nothing. It's almost, I'm almost like to question them, well, if you didn't report anything, I guess you didn't do anything, so maybe you need less of a budget next year.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Um, just wanted to throw in my two cents.
I have mixed feelings with the weekly report. Um, like many heads have stated here today, I think it's a good idea, I think it's potentially a good tool. But I think um rather than the bullet points, the exceptions, the oddities, the uh the good things, we're getting more of the humdrum um to fill space. Um, and that we don't need. And as Mr. Bennett mentioned, you know, the police report now comes through and it with a pasted link. That is basically the driving habits of the police department staff. Ninety percent of that I could care less about. Um, there's, you know, the instances that there are, you know, let's say uh calls, actual calls, actual instances going on, actual investigations happening, that's of interest. Um, to get an idea of how the town's, let's say, crime rate, structure and so forth is all working. Um, the rest of it, I find useless and just filler. As as Jeff stated, um, I've complained multiple times that we've had stretches where you could just copy and paste what the department heads put down week after week. Um, they might change one line, but the rest of it is all the same. Um, that to me, I don't need. But I don't want to become an information desert for the citizens. And particularly with the crunch that we have with TCTV right now. Um, because we eliminate this, we cut down the quarterly reports, and if we have bigger issues with TCTV, we're just crunching out all the information that the taxpayers get, and I don't think that's correct. I wouldn't mind going from the quarterlies. Um, I'd still like the quarterly reports, I don't think the department heads, as Mr. Toth referred to in part, I don't think the department heads from each department needs to come here and read, you know, a one-page, you know, quarterly report, I I, you know, I just don't think that's necessary, it's in our packet. It's, you know, we can read it, the town has access to it. Um, I think that's fine. I would like, you know, two annual reports. And I think we talked about that a little bit as to which quarters would be the ones that we'd want to have the department heads present. You know, because they have different strategic meaning, uh, whether it's the the first record of the season or the last report of the the year, um, or, you know, we go mid-year and end of year. Um, so we have a, how are we doing, are we on the process, how did we do? Um, kind of meeting, you know, I think something like that needs to take place. Otherwise, I think we'll be doing a disservice to ourselves and the taxpayer. Just my two cents. I'm open to all suggestions.
So. Possibly uh accepting the finance that that meant, finance departments. Unless we change our policy, uh, those quarterlies and that monthly stuff would would still, because that's, that's the budget and that's the, that's the most important thing that we deal with. The other departments. Instead of them coming in here quarterly is if, well, and that's my opinion as well, is sitting here listening to somebody read, which I've I've already read the thing, and if I read through it and anything, I just email or pop in and see the department and say, hey, what's, you know, what do you mean by this or? Is that really happening? I mean, if it's something catches my eye, I'd email and I'll come see it.
You could, you know, if you if you move to um bi-annually, um, you could read what they submitted and then pass along questions to me at the meeting as well. So I could take down notes and then get the board answers, it's another way to do it.
So I have one thing about that, though, I think the quarterly reports are good for residents at home who don't get the, you know what I mean? Maybe they they don't have the time to read the weeklies or, you know what I mean? But it gives them an opportunity to sit down and be like, oh, all right, this is what's going on. The quarterly's are very important.
Right, and they can put them online, a-again, you uh. But having somebody come in here, and a lot of them do, they just come in and just. Lori Riddick, she's reporting for a bunch of different boards, I mean, committees. And same with Jackie Brown, you know, cultural council.
Well, I do think it would be better for employee retention as well to um, you know, at least do a um submitted report to the board. And then as opposed to physically coming in, that'd be helpful as well. So even if it was still quarterly, uh submitted reports would be better than coming in person.
But again, I feel like it's more for the residents, it's not. If they have questions, they can come here and be at the meetings and ask questions about it.
They can't though, because they would have to ask during public comment, which is before that.
We also get, Mr. Chair, on the weekly, we get the uh community disease report weekly from um the Board of Health. And the cases, the way they're seeing from usual tests and things like that. Where.
Well, it doesn't have to be all or nothing, if there are things that come uh that are repeating and and reoccurring every week, something like that report, we could, we could still get the report to you weekly or um we could give, you know, two reports to you at every select one meeting. I mean, there's multiple ways to to skin the cat, so if there is, it doesn't have to be all or nothing, if something is of value, we can be sure to keep getting it to you.
I will, um. I think we've had some discussion and some points made. I think I would put this on the agenda for the next meeting. And Will and Ben just can um. Have a little time to kick it over and then email um. The favor uh. Bi-annually reports from departments uh. Notwithstanding the finance team, which is in our policy and uh. The weekly report uh requirement possibly moving to every two weeks. Which could be included in uh the town administrator report updating the board on and, you know, the residents to TCDV of uh any major things that that happen.
I mean, nothing to kick around, if we did get rid of the weekly reports, I'd be willing to write um a formal town administrator report that we could put on the website. So I'd write it before every meeting, submit it to you, and then it would go on the website. So that, again, doesn't have to be all or nothing. But so is so that, so we want to put this on the next agenda?
Yes, it would give board members time to, they can put their report in and see what, where we are then. Next item is item H, it's a free cash policy. Consideration for updates, changes. I printed out and gave everyone and I've emailed it. It's one is just a history of the use of of free cash and um how it was used over the years to support the general fund budget, putting zero dollars away for any of the reserves funds. And also an item in there um several times, uh using general stabilization fund. One time in particular to pay, help pay the Worcester County Regional Retirement. And that's similar to using general stabilization to pay the school assessment, a regular recurring expense. The use of free cash to fund the general fund budget um and not putting anything away can have an effect on the bond rating. Having uh substantial reserves shows the bond rating institutions that the town is in a financially healthy enough position to put money away. It also affects your your bond rating um and the stabilization funds also make the town money uh through the investment income. And my major, uh my my biggest thing was um. Sending um, changing the the percentage of free cash that goes into uh each uh category. If right now it's sixty seven percent is reserved for working capital and other town needs and what that it means, my first got on the board in two thousand nineteen, when this financial policy was in effect, that was fifty percent of free cash. And fifty percent went to uh the reserves, the stabilization funds. And then this, the fifty, it went to sixty percent. And then it went to sixty seven percent. And as that percentage has increased, uh, and this is all metal record, you can uh look through town meetings records of uh the amount of free cash that has been used to, excuse me, back up the general fund budget has been on the increase. Also, um, free cash number, uh, you know, you can hear the department heads, when when's the free cash being certified? Do you want the capital improvement committee? It's like, well, we don't have free cash certified, so we don't have a capital budget. That's the wrong answer. You do have a capital budget, it's the capital stabilization fund. And so when you go to sixty seven percent, you take more of your free cash and you you set it aside and you're putting less in your reserves, means you're earning less investment money, less interest. And you're not going to do what the policy says regarding uh capital stabilization, for example. Uh, it's supposed to be as a a pay as you go. That was the, that was the plan. But you're not going to be able to pay as you go if you're putting more towards the general fund budget and less in um less in the the general stabilization, the infrastructure, the capital stabilization, the OPEB. We now have a a special stabilization fund. Don't believe we, the town meeting appropriated any money into it, we just created it. And then there is the reserve fund, the town reserve fund, and it's typically been between forty and fifty. A couple of years, it got used to zero right out. One of the years, twenty three, it was, it was in Ju, happened in June, but uh. But changing the percentage of distribution would allow our reserve funds to get built up and and you actually make money. Uh, it would allow the capital stabilization fund to be used according to the policy to maintain a two percent and be pay as you go for. It says capital in in some places define capital as the roads and the buildings. And uh and others like Templeton would include bucks and cars and in capital. It it's hard to pay as you go if you're putting less money in there and more, leaving more for the town administrator to use for different things and, you know, well, that's that capital budget. How much money we got for free cash to spend, capital? It's, you know, that's the outlook I hear. Uh, and I just think, you know, we, like I said, we went from fifty percent to sixty percent to sixty seven percent. Two years ago, free cash went from, the one year was like one point two million and went down to six hundred and seventy four thousand and some change. And so, and you can look up on on DLS website, our free cash had been going up and now it's on the decline. It's been steadily going down, it bumps up a little touch, went from six seventy four to eight seventy eight. So when it went from one point one plus million down to six seventy four, the board said, well, that's good budget execution, okay? I guess when it went back up to eight seventy eight, that's bad budget execution. It's just, you know, and and then you have to decide how you want to generate free cash. Because according to the policy and a recommendation from the DLR, DLR is five percent tried to generate. So, and this is out of the Association of Found Town Finance Committees handbook, which is the advisor committee, the finance committees. And it states in there, you know, reserves, which are the stabilization funds, they can be built into department budgets. Meaning you, but the, some department head tells you that you need ten grand for this, you put fifteen, you put twenty in there. You can go back and look through the uh the fiscal year reports, end of the years, and there was a few years in in people, including members of the advisor committee and residents. Health insurance would have three hundred and something thousand left over at the end of the year. And then it would be two hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifty. And the question was asked, you know, why are you doing that? Me personally, I I believe the town administrator was building a budget at that time to build up free cash so they could go from general stabilization fund, I think in eighteen was or seventeen, when they did the multiple year audits, was less than eighty thousand dollars. And you go through and look at all the free cash over the years that the town had. And they weren't putting anything in savings, they were just using it to fund the general fund budget. Got eight hundred thousand dollars in free cash, okay. Town meeting, you know, we got a budget for, say, ten million dollars. Okay, well, we got eight hundred thousand to start with. And then you throw in local receipts, is a million bucks, and then state aid, say, is a million bucks, you've got two point eight million. Okay, so to pay for that ten million, you need to raise this by for property taxes. But you put nothing away for any emergency, you put nothing away to show the bonding agency. So when you go to borrow money, you get a better rate. I I sent out a percentage thing, um, cheap, I believe, to
Yep.
People, uh, my thoughts on the percentage breakdown, where they would go, I. It's a, it's, that's my my thought, I don't know how. It's, it's, that's my, my thought. I don't know how the rest of the board feel.
This is.
Well, one is, that's the, yeah, this is the existing. This was, this is the existing, what the policy says now. And what I emailed out was the, the different percentages.
It was this one here. It's fifteen percent. It's a ten percent, twenty percent, twenty percent, ten, ten, ten and a five. Was what we got in the email.
And my thought is to build actually, you know, for the capital stabilization and the infrastructure stabilization, which is supposed to try to help fund the pavement study, which it wasn't just paving the roads because you're paving a road, but you're not addressing the drainage. Either putting drainage in a road that doesn't have it or replacing the existing drainage that a lot of the stuff to town and there's been several instances where the old galvanized pipe has collapsed and they found sinkholes and drive along in a heavy truck and even over in the Back Bay neighborhood where they that was rebuilt, water main, drainage supposedly sidewalks and repaved granite curve thing over multiple years with CDBG grant money. But at the end of one road, I think they just something happened and, and a drain was just discontinued the pipe. They had a big sinkhole over there and several other areas in town. So you only have a small amount of chapter ninety money coming from the state because their formula is, well, it's their formula and that's how it works. So to try to beef that up and have money available so you can plan is to put more money, more of the free cash, whatever amount it is left. That and the capital stabilization fund is to put the twenty percent in there and, and go back to a higher amount in general stabilization fund. The, the thought at the time going from ten to fifteen to eight percent was, well, we've had, you know, million five and we haven't used it, so we can just cut back. But that's the largest amount. It actually makes money and it's the thing that bonding companies look at if you, you know, produce that exclusion that you have in.
Mr. Chair.
I just want to get away from, try to put it in place. So it's in writing and the board has a policy that we will use less money, less free cash to rely on and, and fund the general fund budget. It's again, in that printout sheet, in the DOR has recommended it in two thousand nine and two thousand twenty one that get away from using free cash. It's one time money because it can change from year to year to fund the general fund budget. It's four hundred and thirty thousand for the school assessment. Okay, where do you get that money next year? Because the, what, the school budget assessment is going to drop by four hundred and thirty thousand? No. We use two hundred and fifteen thousand from, from free cash this year payable. What is the school assessment going to drop by two hundred and fifteen thousand officially twenty seven? You got to find that money when you, when you use it. So.
I just want to add to the, the infrastructure stabilization fund would help to finance the, the bridge repairs that I needed to. Mr. Chair, I had a couple of questions on the email that you had sent out. So there's a ten percent transfer to special stabilization fund. What account would you be talking about that would be?
It's a, it's it's a special stabilization.
But what would it be used for?
The intent, Mr. May made the motion at annual town meeting. It was to try to put the initiative was to put the meal stacks in there to buy police cruisers and highway trucks. But it was created a special stabilization fund. So you look at the town meeting vote, we, we voted to create it, but nothing, no follow up in there.
And then there's the, there's the ten percent of transfer to the reserve fund. That's different from in the book. So I was just, I just wanted to get clarification on these different ones that weren't in the original. That's what I want to know what they were for.
The idea, and there is in the financial management policy, there is, it was written how many years ago, five or so years. There's kind of a formula to try to get the reserve fund, increase it each year percentage wise, but it has never, hasn't been done, hasn't been followed. So you take the reserve fund right now and that's money coming out of taxation to have a bigger reserve fund once you have free cash certified. The town administrator, according to the policy, is supposed to come up with a plan to use it. So you would take, and this is supposed to be the outline on where that money goes. So to have a larger reserve fund that if you don't use it, it just rolls into free cash anyway, unless you zero it out. So my, my idea is, and I pointed this out back in, in twenty one, actually, at that finance meeting with the DOR, the financial review, is a way to have a larger reserve fund for half of the fiscal year when your town, your department budgets, they're spending money out of them. So they're going down and it's you have less money to move around if something big happens. So a way to make, have a larger reserve fund that you may need in the third and fourth quarters of the fiscal year is to take a percentage of free cash and put it into the town's reserve fund. So a town meeting votes a fifty thousand dollar reserve fund, say, and ten percent of free cash is, I don't know, just say another fifty thousand, you would have a reserve fund of a hundred thousand. So something happens with a fire truck, something happens with scout hall getting struck by lightning. You, you, no, I mean, you, you know, that's the one fund, there's no town meeting involved in nothing. You just go to the advisory committee and boom. And, and you know, if you have a legit thing, and we have, you know, the general fund budget, millions of dollars and it's backed up by fifty grand. I mean, you know, we just had an accident with a highway truck. It's, if, and then we had one with a police cruiser not too long ago. Then, you know, the minor, but if you, if you need money to to repair it or do something while you're waiting on insurance, bumping up the reserve fund to me is, is a smart move and it puts money in a place where department heads can't look at it as a pile of money that is available to spend.
About the zero point five percent rolled into the following fiscal year, is that something that we can legally do?
Yeah, it's free cash that you don't appropriate and you just, actually, it's in the financial management.
It's not really, it's not really rolling it, but when you don't spend it, what happens is you then can't spend it until the free cash next year is certified. So in theory, in theory, if you leave five grand on the table, in theory, your free cash will be higher by five grand the next year.
Or you know that you have five grand in case you could be in a deficit of, you know.
Yeah, but that, but there are other factors that go into free cash, so it may not be five grand higher. While I'm speaking, can I speak on this? Right. So so I completely agree with your point that we need to not use one time revenue sources to fund the operating budget. But the way the policy is written now, it's a sixty seven percent reserved for working capital and other town needs. That other town needs could be taking it and, and using it on the operating budget, which I agree with you. That's not a good idea. But sixty seven percent used for working capital, so all the trucks and equipment and, you know, roof and this and that and the other thing. That makes sense because these are one off things and, and free cash is not, is, is a one time revenue source. Changing it to these numbers doesn't solve, I mean, in a way, it would solve not using the free cash for operating purposes because the, the number goes from sixty seven to fifteen percent. And so in doing that math quick, if we get a six hundred thousand dollar free cash certification, which is that, that is where you're trending year over year. Fifteen percent is only ninety thousand dollars. That's barely a truck. So I wouldn't want to see us tie our hands behind our back because we're so interested in funding these savings accounts as opposed to paying for the current needs that we have today. So for example, in working with the capital improvement committee, because there's a lot that department heads are looking for and obviously the capital committee is, you know, vetting what, what is needed, what isn't. Because things are so expensive, I, I've been looking into three public works items to see if we could finance as opposed to spending with free cash. But assuming that we had to spend free cash on those items, two of Bob's trucks alone were four hundred thousand dollars. And they're, you know, things that we need to buy eventually, if not now. Some of his trucks are rotting and they're not going to be drivable soon. And so we can't kick the can down the road on too many of these capital items. So while I also would like to put money into these savings accounts, I wouldn't want to see us take that sixty seven percent and, and chop it like this. I, I think more thought needs to be given to this because we have needs now and we have needs later, but we do have needs now. So that's, that's my two cents on this.
Mr. Chair.
Chair. Go ahead.
I was just going to ask, we had discussed, when we discussed this before on one of our agendas about the Worcester retirement and where would that fall within? That's the only other thing I hadn't asked.
That is out of, that's strictly out of appropriation and it's split up with the, as same as, as the health insurance, either enterprise funds and the general fund.
But you, you had talked about possibly making a special thing for that because we're going to get possibly hit bad.
Technically, you could use the money out of the special stabilization fund for that because it was not, it, town meeting vote was just create a special stabilization fund and I, I know Mr. May is laughing and that's not what the intent was, but that was.
This is exactly why I made the motion I did at the town meeting.
That's again, but you know, that's the, that's the town meeting vote. As far as the highway department, they have two old trucks over there, a two thousand seven ten wheeler and a green pickup. The rest of their stuff, and they have a nineteen ninety six loader that the select board was told was junk and was not usable back in two thousand and twelve, but it's still rolling around to this day and still functions. Is it the best? No, but it still works. All their other trucks have been bought in the last, well, five, six years. They've they have, the highway departments bought, had a lot of new equipment bought, like their basin cleaning truck is used, is older, but we used to get basin cleaning done for thirteen thousand a year. They vend it and we didn't have to buy a hundred thousand plus truck. And the capital improvement committee, if we funded the capital stabilization fund the way it should be and according to the policy, pay as you go capital, you could target this much money to go in there. You can spend this much by main, and while maintaining the balance according to the policy, unless we change that, that is your capital budget right there and that's what you can plan on spending. And I know plan is a, that four letter word that we don't use in town. Well, we say it a lot, but we don't do it. We just don't. Again, these percentages was my thoughts on these and look at these and myself, Mr. May, before he was on the board, we had kicked this around before as moving the percentages to basically really to get rid of that, that sixty seven percent, even fifty percent. It's I, I heard one department head say, you know, to the board, you know, when, when Carter was here, we had five hundred, six hundred thousand dollars to spend. They say the more big a pile of money they see, oh, they think about spending. I don't hear, well, we could do this, this and this to better serve the residents, the benefit to them. It's always spend, spend, spend. And the only way I believe to control that is to stuff it in these stabilization funds that require a town meeting vote to get them out, get money out of it to fund stuff. Now, that makes it hard on us budget wise, in case you want to do this or that. It's, it's a town meeting vote. Town meeting can go, you know what? We're going to leave that money in that fund and we ain't going to spend it. We can go find you four hundred and thirty thousand to pay the school assessment somewhere else. Which is, wouldn't have been a bad thing in my opinion. Just, you know, leaning on that, well, we got one and a half million dollars. Yeah, we can spend four hundred of it. And they didn't put four hundred back in at the next year. So your savings is losing money and you're, you're losing money because you're going to, you have a smaller balance. You're going to make less money on your investments and investment money, interest. The way it's, it is done, it up and down, up and down. You, you can lose four grand this month and, you know, make four grand back the next quarter and at the end of the year, you might have made, say, ten grand. That, that one quarter where you lost, you, you know, you could have made fourteen, but you know, the market, the way it goes. The capital and the infrastructure, it allows for planning. It gives us extra money to add to the chapter ninety money, which is again, the pavement study back in eighteen, at that time, it was, I think, they said we had like twenty one million dollars in eighteen money worth of road work that needed to be done, drainage, pavement, etc. And we paved a lot of roads, but we haven't done the other stuff. And, and you know, water mains is another thing. You know, you can see that water main breaks all over the place. They're old. Because we, again, and this was a board vote to go from fifty percent to sixty seven percent. And I believe the only way to, to reel that in and to be responsible is to change those percentages drastically. And then you have to make hard decisions when it comes down to the budget.
Mr. Chair. I, I, I don't think anyone thinks that we're not already going to have to make hard decisions this year, but to, but I also want to make another point about the reserve fund. So it would seem, and I'm just diving into your budget, but it would, it would seem that year over year, you get tighter and tighter with the expenses. And then I assume also that while the DOR requires us to budget pretty conservatively with revenues, you're, you're probably pushing the revenues as hard as DOR will allow. So that's part of the reason why you're seeing free cash on a downward decline. So if that trend continues, ten percent of free cash to the reserve fund will eventually become less than what you're funding now. So you'll, so unless some, some other part of the budget changes, we, we stop bringing revenue from new growth, you're actually going to see eventually less in the reserve fund than more.
Well, actually, I want to stay with the appropriation of fifty or whatever town meeting votes in the spring, but when we have free cash certified, you take ten percent of the free cash and, and add it to whatever town meeting appropriates.
I see what you're saying. So you're still, so you're, so you're still going to appropriate fifty thousand to the reserve.
Well, if the town being appropriates when free cash is certified.
This is advisories reserve fund, right?
The town reserves.
That's controlled by advisory, right?
Yes.
Okay. So I mean, they've indicated that they're, they're not going to spend anything from that unless it's an emergency unforeseen. So if we're going to bump up that fund, we need to be aware of that. Like police vests, I thought that would have been a good use. They disagreed. So I just, I want the board to keep that in mind.
But, you know, I mean, that's that's why there is finance committees in, in, in Massachusetts because the people in Quincy back in eighteen something got tired of having Because the people in Quincy, back in eighteen something, got tired of having a one-sided view of the town's finances. They said they needed another set of eyes, another voice. And that creek got created and legislature went to the courts. It was found legal and eventually it's now mandatory. Everybody, every town with a million dollars or more valuation has to have a plan. Virtually every city and town in Mass. And it's there to look out for the residents.
Mr. Chair, if I may. Yeah, this is a bone that I've been chewing on for a number of years. And I remember back when it was started under Carter, the discussions around the percentages and how they were supposed to be utilized and so forth. At that time, I believe we were trying to fund four accounts. I think, I think we had General Stabilization, OPEB, CapEx, and working capital and so forth. So I think it was four accounts. We've changed the accounts. We've added accounts to it, but we're still working with the same amount of money. Cause we haven't increased that, you know, the five percent number for free cash, which if you look at, I believe it's DLS, Best Practices and so forth, you go through there. They talk about when you start adding other structures that you need to increase the amount of money in the kitty. Not just break up the amount of money that you have into smaller versions. One of the things I'd like to give as an example is by increasing the working capital to sixty-seven percent and decreasing the general stabilization of seven and a half due to the, well, I won't say the word I was going to, but due to the lack of understanding of our previous administrator. And it shows right here in B2, General Stabilization Policy, where it says, "The town shall target a general stabilization fund balance of not less than eight percent of the prior year's omnibus budget." That was never the way eight percent, the discussion around the general stabilization. You know, this was a goal. When we started this out, we were starting at three percent, I believe, when Carter was here. We started to, you know, the goal was to get three percent general stabilization. And then we moved it to five, and then we moved it to eight, and the goal was then to move it to twelve. But instead, at eight percent, we said, "We've done it. Yay, we've succeeded and we can change it now. So we're gonna spend the money differently." Well, as was illuminated earlier, we took out four hundred and thirty thousand dollars from General Stabilization to support the school. And replenishing that at seven and a half percent of roughly six hundred or seven hundred thousand is an eight-year process, just to replenish that amount of money. It does not work for me at all. I absolutely agree with Jeff's principle in this, breaking it down and locking it away and making the town taxpayers vote on which way they want to spend it. We disagree a little bit on percentages, but that's just life. You know, I can agree on some things, you can't agree on others. But you know, the principle of it is, you're saying like with capital. Personally, I've hated the way we've done capital in the past. We give sixty-seven percent to the town administrator and the town administrator goes in the room and comes out and says, "Oh, okay, well, we'll have four hundred thousand dollars for capital," and that's what they tell Capital Improvement. And Capital Improvement goes about spending four hundred thousand dollars.
Couldn't, Mr. May, couldn't the answer to that be that you had at least four hundred thousand of needs, though? Get what I'm saying? So like?
Absolutely. I think we have more than that. And that's obvious by the number that's in our budget or in our capital plan that shows that we have two point two million dollars worth of need. But I don't think that method gets us there. Because we don't have a capital plan. And I personally don't care how much money we have available for capital, until we have an inventory, I'm voting no on all of it. Just the way it is. You know, because we, until we know what we have, we don't know what we want, we need. And just replenishing things for the sake of, that's what we used to have, does not work for me. You know, we've made some, really, in the last ten years, we've made some really self-defeating, let's say, plans. We've made plans and then halfway through the plan, we cancel the plan and we go to Plan Two. And then everything we did in Plan One is garbage. And a waste of money. You know, I'm hoping that with a new leadership, right, you, you, right there, that guy over there. I'm hoping that that'll change. I believe it will. But as, you know, you stated earlier, well, misstated earlier, you've been here for, I think, four months. Not ten.
Said two.
I thought you said ten.
No.
That's what I heard.
Two months. Two months. I've been here three months.
Okay, but anyway.
Been two months.
It doesn't, that's irrelevant to the whole issue. But when you're here for ten months, I think you'll have a better understanding of why, you know, I feel this way, and I believe Mr. Bennett feels this way. And, you know, others on the board. Because, you know, the way we've done things in the past doesn't work. Truly. You know, because we're always stealing from Peter to pay Paul. And I'd rather have a plan. Four-letter word, I'd like to have one. I'm not afraid of four-letter words. I use them frequently. But we have to get this portion under control and right now, I think this is the way to do it. And I think we need to change the way we buy capital because of the expenses. I don't think we're going to be able to in the future outright buy many of these items. I think we're gonna have to finance them because, you know, we're gonna have million-dollar fire trucks coming along. And I don't see a million dollars of just free money in our future anywhere as soon. As you referenced, the two trucks we just got for DPW were four hundred thousand dollars. And those were the, I think, the less expensive ones that we could get.
They were, they were up to state good, so they were.
Yeah. You know, so I, I want to look at this as a new step rather than, let's say, pulling back on the old method or taking the feet out from underneath the old method. You know, like I said, I disagree with some of the numbers that are presented here. But I do agree with the principle. And I guess that's where I'll leave it.
Mr. Chair. I would like to know the numbers, the difference of what you like, Mr. May, for those numbers, this percentage differences.
Wouldn't you now?
Yeah, I would.
Well, for a small fee. No, but I honestly would like more in the infrastructure, in the capital. And I, I think, myself personally, I don't like ten percent going to OPEB. And the rollover, I don't really believe in because, as was alluded to by Mr. Ryan here, we could leave five percent on the table. That does not mean that next year, that five percent is gonna be there. So we're potentially just leaving money that's gonna disappear some other expense. Sorry about that. But there's some other expense along the way, whether it's one that we choose or whether it's one that the state just says, "You owe." That comes out of our free cash certification. It's just my understanding, right or wrong, but those are some of the differences that I have with Mr. Bennett's numbers here. But like I said, the principle, I'm fully behind.
So my thing on putting money into OPEB, I read an article a couple of years back, the City of Lemon stuff. I think it was twenty years. Almost the time that the current mayor has been there, and I think he's been a mayor like twenty-five years, whatever it is. They put as much money as they possibly could into their OPEB fund, which is the retirees' health insurance. They mandated to fund. They did that and finally got it fully funded. So all they have to do is put money in to maintain it. And when they got it fully funded, it freed up three hundred and eighty-five thousand a year that they now have, that they, according to the article, they were spending on their drainage sidewalks and so forth. That's twenty years of at least that of discipline of every bit of extra money that they had, you know, whatever, to get that taken care of. The town of Wellesley now, they, DOR won't let anybody do it anymore because they, apparently they pulled a good fast one. But they borrowed, they did a debt exclusion for millions to put it in their OPEB, so they were fully funded. And the debt payment was actually less than what it would have taken them each year to put money aside to get to that point. But the DOR said, "You can't find what to do. Nobody else can do that." So that is my thinking of putting money away. Am I? Is that a pipeline in the, you know, if that were nothing? No. I mean, if you only go to five percent, like it was, and the infrastructure with the other five percent, same thing with reserve. You want to be, you don't want to let nobody, no money roll, you know, free cash roll into the next year. We can change that section of the policy where it says we'll do that. And then put that money in the OPEB into the capital stabilization and the infrastructure. But that was my thinking on putting money in the OPEB and trying to follow the policy, which, you know, it's
Mr. Chairman.
You is rolling some free cash into the following year, so you pretty guaranteed that you're gonna have some money in free cash. Unless you have, unless you have, end up with a deficit.
Mr. Chairman. So this seems like it's gonna be a longer conversation. I think a lot of board members have thoughts and opinions. We've been discussing this for a while. It's nine thirty. And I just want to point out, we have three other topics to get to. It might be a good idea to table this until the next meeting.
Sure, why not?
Unless a board member would like to make a motion now. I'm not trying to interrupt your train of thought or anything, but
Well,
just noting the time and the amount of agenda items we have left.
No, I'm not opposed to putting this on the twenty-second because, well, I know that a little comment in, Mr. May had a different idea around percentage. I know he agrees with most of it. I know there was a couple that he has questions on it. So, and I've heard from other board members, so now that we've discussed it, they can send where you think your percentage breakdowns will be and we will hopefully have a consensus on the second, or our next meeting.
Mr. Chair, on that regard, should we send those suggestions to you or to Mr. Ryan?
Send them to Mr. Ryan.
I agree with you.
I think I can handle four emails.
I'll go pull him out of his hole.
Thank you, sir.
I don't know, Jeff. They got deleted. I don't know. I don't know what happened. They disappeared.
Well, so did that fifteen percent.
Next item, previous one, this is just a procedural thing. It's for the January six twenty-six Special Town Election Warrant. This is for, this concerns the debt exclusion that was passed at the Special Town Meeting. This comes in front of the board for approval, and then we sign it and it goes to the town clerk and gets posters and all of that. Give it to Mr. Mr. Chair.
No, you announced it perfectly. I have nothing else to add, so.
I just have a concern with another January sixth election.
That's fine. We'll be good.
Do I move to accept a and approve the Special Town Election Warrant for January sixth, two thousand twenty-six as presented and for the board to sign?
I can.
Any discussion? Hearing on the motion, how would you vote, Mr. May?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Toth?
Yes.
Ms. Bassel?
Yes.
Mr. Bennett votes yes. Item J, Select Board Operating Procedures, Mr. and Mrs. Chair.
So per the last meeting, you made a number of suggestions. I integrated them into the policy and I also just made mostly ministerial changes, I guess you could say. So do we want to just go through them one by one, page by page, and just quickly, I'll quickly just speak to the changes I made and that sound right? Ms. Bassel says yes, so we'll do. Okay. So nothing on the first page, on page two. Up at the top, it said, you know, execution. I changed it to executive. Pro tempore, I spelled out the word. Down at the bottom, we removed, well, I think I changed preparation meeting, I just put agenda procedures because it seemed to more accurately reflect what we were talking about. We crossed off that top and I think we agreed, or I think, I mean, I think I clarified this based on what we were talking about, so. Responsible for coordinating planning of agenda as town administrator and Select Board Chair. All items agenda must be submitted to town administrator at three P M. on Thursdays preceding the meeting, blah, blah, blah. And so that is what we discussed, unless anyone disagrees. Page three.
I have a question on page three.
Yeah.
It says now it's six, six o'clock, but our office isn't open until, is open till four thirty, according to our vote that we had done our hours. And that hasn't been rectified yet or changed.
No, but I work later, that's why.
So basically?
It just gives me flexibility, just in case I'm busy until the point when we close, which is often the case. People come into my office, people interrupt me, people call me. And so the building closes at four thirty, now I've got time to get stuff done. So that, sometimes on Thursdays, it gets rough because everyone wants a piece of me and that's fine. I love working with everybody.
So we're gonna go with Friday, Saturday, and Sunday? And possibly, if we have time, to look at our material on Monday? So we went from six days to now possibly two to three days for us as board members to look over our material is my concern.
Well, that was agreed at the last meeting that we would send this out on, the packets out on Thursday for your Monday meetings. So you'd have Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and most of Monday before the meeting.
I'm just putting out my concern there. I know we talked about A D compliant and things in the past for other things that we worked on. And I feel like two to three days, if we get anybody other than me, someone in the future that has some issues with reading and so forth, this could be, you know, an issue. And that's why I wanted to point it out.
So that was page three. Page four. So um, so that was page three, um, page four, uh, decorum, um, so I think, let's see, so under number four decorum, um, which is literally just, so I cross that out because um, we have a um, citizen input, you know, sort of paragraph that's talking about and with the changes in the law and a um, a possible need for a um, so down below highlighted, I'm suggesting that we have a citizen input policy. There's a change in the law, I forgot to bring the case law, but a couple of years ago, the change in the law, most towns have a separate um, policy reflecting citizen input because it can be a First Amendment violation if it's not, if if you're not careful on how you manage um, citizen input, and so that's why I crossed off a number four, the stuff about disorderly, profane, disrespectful. Someone can be disrespectful to you in in a meeting, unfortunately, and, you know, we can't, we can't silence them. So that's why I cross that out, it just says, like, this stuff must be done during citizen input, uh, as opposed to people, you know, shouting things out during a meeting. But there's a highlighted aspect under number five, um, where I'd like the board to consider allowing me to bring you a draft of a separate um, citizen input policy for your review. Uh, most board.
Yeah, that that's mainly because of that court case.
Yeah.
Where they told the lady to keep that, you can't, it was like that, it went all the way and.
They also joined the meeting, during the meeting and stuff, so there's, yeah, there's a number of things that they sort of sort of goofed on, um, so now we now we've learned a bit more about it. I also cross off the part about people having, being able to participate um, in between agenda items because again, that that opens you up to First Amendment violations, you'd have to be fair to everyone. And not everyone is as respectful as some of the people who who come frequently. So we'll we'll circle back around to that. If anyone has a question, jumping to page five, just some spelling things, adding some S's, um, correcting some spelling errors, uh, closing, you know, of, um, start deliberation, so. Um, one, one ad that we did was on this page with um, with dangerous dog hearings. Um, I tried to phrase that in a way that made sense, that we're gonna do, we're gonna do dangerous dog hearings as separate uh, public hearings and on separate meetings, as was discussed. So if everyone's, if everyone's happy with that wording, we can leave that.
Excuse me for one, if I may?
Yeah.
Um, the dangerous dog, that would, that would remove the nuisance dog from a separate hearing?
No, this was, my intent was that all of your dog hearings would be a separate um, meeting as you, as you asked. Because you voted to have them all separate.
Right, right, I was just funny, because this here says dangerous dog, and with the dangerous dog, that's a separate.
Yeah, we generally refer to them as dangerous dog hearings, even if they're not. But if if there's another um, term that the board would like me to use, dog, maybe this dog hearing?
Yeah.
Drop the word dangerous.
Alright.
All dog hearings.
Yeah, happy to do that, okay.
Thank you, James.
Yeah. Alright, so uh, and then just some grammatical stuff.
There's a couple places in there you gotta change it too, just so you know.
Yeah, yep.
Yep, okay.
I'll do a search for that, um.
Yep.
Uh, you'll notice that I I prefer, where it says administrator, it says I put town in front of it, so it's just a preference, doesn't change the meeting of anything. Um, so page six, some more spelling errors, grammatical stuff, um, I removed the part about someone being in person to take minutes, um, chair support show regularly. Oh, so this was, this was me taking creative liberty, so. At number thirteen, uh, last sentence, I believe, unless suitable for release early, the chair or the select board doesn't need show. I put regularly instead of annually, it just gives you flexibility to, you know, every couple of months or every month or whatever, you know, review executive session minutes, I was just, just to give you the flexibility, instead of annually, made it sound like once a year, you'd go through them all, and then we'd have, I'll show up on one meeting, so just trying to give you flexibility. Page seven, all mostly grammatical stuff, what's this one, Tyler? Oh, as we discussed, uh, we took out, and items will be added by voter consensus of the board because as Ms. Graves pointed out, she's going through the agenda, which makes sense, that things that we gave to me to do or gave the board to circle back on, they're just going on the um, action item tracker, as opposed to taking a vote every time. Just some kind of grammatical thing, they took it as a whole, just awkward um, kind of grammar, unless someone disagrees, I can put it back. Oh, so this one again, so on number two, under D, number two, role of the town administrator, I took a little creative liberty, I just wanna point this out. Town administrator shall attend all meetings of the board unless excused and had there for vacation or illness. Uh, there could be other reasons why I would like to be excused, my car breaks down when I'm away, Bob's shaking his head, no, you better walk here. So I I didn't wanna limit us to, limit me to being excused, um, I think there, I think I was, I think, I I I think I took a personal day during one of the events, kind of family thing. So, I mean, that wasn't technically vacation. So I just wanted to take that out to give us more flexibility with that, rest of the page is all this grammatical stuff. Page eight, uh, I said as soon as practicable, um, so if a legal opinion comes in, I'll endeavor to get it to you, you know, as soon as possible, um, it just wasn't kind of clear, like, you know, am I supposed to drop what I'm doing, leave the meeting I'm at to forward you an email? Just, just some kind of grammar stuff there. Responsibilities of the board chair, um, I wrote in there, it's up to you, items may be taken out of order with the general consensus of the board, generally when you, I think when you're Robert's rules, if you're gonna take an item out of order, generally you look to the board and see if it's okay to skip an item and come back to it. So it's up to you if you want it in there. Nothing else of substance on that page, page nine, um, I think this was something, oh, this was language Mr. Bennett wanted, under number four. Uh, act in place of the chair during his or her meetings, chair leave office, vice chair starts doing these, blah, blah, blah. That was part of Mr. Bennett's request. Uh, number ten, some spelling things, um. Alright, so I took out refrain as an individual outside of chain of command because it was kind of clunky and I didn't understand kind of what it was saying. Recognize and support the administrative chain of command on complaints. Maybe that should have been a period, but, you know, it just, it didn't, didn't make sense of the sentence, so I took it out. I I I think it's kind of redundant, is what I'm saying, so I took that out. In relation with the town boards at commissions, um, I took out the all boards meeting, that way it's not a requirement, you could always call one, but we indicated we're not, I think we're not doing it this year. In relations to citizens, I just rephrased this because it was worded funny, but that, no intent, there's no intent of any change there. Page eleven, more grammatical stuff, um, I added this to this, this part number four, it's talking about citizen input, I added a sentence to to help protect the board. The board will not respond to any questions or comments made during public comment as is required by law.
Um, I have a question on number eleven.
Page eleven?
Yeah.
Okay.
On E, when it talks about when the candidates get their um, informational packets?
Yes.
So they're just gonna get links to where they can find the information, or are they gonna get, still get packets?
No, I would just send them a link because instead of making another packet and or scanning it in, I mean, it's, we're already putting it up on the website.
Will they be getting the same length as the select board, um?
Yeah, it's the same packet, the only thing they wouldn't be entitled to is executive session minutes, so your packets, when you get them digitally, includes executive session, which we couldn't be able to give them. Um, and so instead of just me sending separate emails to potentially multiple candidates, uh, just one, one email with the link to our website, once we put it up, just seems more efficient, I guess, because we're already using the website for that purpose.
Wait, didn't we get like a special, another book or something, uh, we got like financials or something? I can't, oh, we got the budget, that's what it was, we got the budget book. We were given a hard copy of the budget book, is that in there? Do they get that still?
Um, I don't know if it was in there before, um.
I don't know, I know is I got a, like a hardcover budget book.
Weekly reports and materials after exec- executive session, blah, blah, blah. Which would be the budget book because, you know, the rest of the board gets the budget book, so we would also, or the new people would also.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's not a big deal, if there's a candidate that's been identified, I'll send them whatever they.
But if they wanted to request a hard copy, because it's, this is linked, so I didn't know, would that be available to them?
Yeah, I mean, I, that's, that's fine, we're trying to be, you know, helpful while they run for office, so I'm happy to.
Okay.
Great one, it's not a big deal.
I just checking.
Yep. Okay, we got ten minutes, um. Number, so page twelve, uh, so I think this is talking about um, the awards and whatnot that the town's used to doing. Um, I changed town administrator to select board, so I consult with a wide array of persons in determining the citizen of the year and hometown hero, that's, I think more of a thing for the select board to do, not the town administrator, I may not know um, enough people around town to know who should be designated, plus, you know, an elected body usually does stuff like that. Then I had a question about number six, um, this talks about plaques and putting them up in town hall, but wouldn't, wouldn't these people who are getting these plaques, would they rather take them home with them as an award?
Well, I just, I just wanted to say with that, we already have the spaces for them, it's financially less expensive to to take off the thing and have it printed on it. Um, if, uh, when people get plaques, um, it will go to their house, but here, people can remember those who passed too. If somebody has passed and been given an award, it's nice that we could be able to still celebrate those folks. Uh, we have two of them, there's plenty of, I think that that's something way down the line when it gets filled up, but I think the way it is currently, it's financially, I mean, they get a certificate, um, that they get, um, but the, we recognize them at town hall so that their families and everybody knows that we still care, I think is, we have the space on the plaques and.
So you're saying they get a plaque, but then we do the, a name plate?
No, they get a certificate, they just get a certificate. Um, we put their name on the plaque on the hallway to remember their achievement.
So they're not getting an individual plaque?
No, they get a certificate, and they get, they get, um, um.
So they get like a name?
It gets a picture, we take a picture, it goes on the town website, that kind of a thing, but their name gets, um, engraved on the plaques that are in the hallway, so that way too, um, not, I mean, how do I say this? When you get a plaque and you put it up, someday you will pass with this, we will always remember you because your name will be in the hallway of the town.
So it sounds like it's not written right, sounds like they had a certificate and then they get a name plate on the, the plaque in the hallway.
Correct.
Alright, so the whole thing has to be.
A perpetual plaque.
Alright.
Yeah, perpet- yeah.
So I'm gonna, I have to rewrite that. Page eleven, uh, grammatical, grammatical, number four, uh, oh, wait, did I get a repeat? How'd this happen?
Yeah, we were on twelve.
Yeah, twelve, okay, so I flipped it over. Thirteen's a signature page, and then fourteen, we get into exhibit A. Down, uh, on page fourteen, work, I added workshop as as a type of meeting, um, that you do. And then meetings of the legislative body, this was just a rephrasing of this, the sentence was clunky and a little grammatically questionable, so I just rephrased it. Wasn't mine, had to change the meaning. Fifteen, um, I think this was a reflection of what we currently do, fall time meeting may be called, October fifteen? Uh, I think I was just grammatically changing some things there, I was fall time earlier, yeah. So I think my intent there was just to make things, makes, make more sense. Sixteen, looks like, oh, grammar clarification. And then that was it. So I'm gonna rewrite the plaque one, and I think that's dangerous from your dog hearing. Is it, were there any other comments? It's tough how I do on the grammar, I know you were looking at that.
Yeah, I was, it looks good.
Thank you. So, um, do you wanna bring it back for another vote, does the board wanna take a, a vote to say, accept, accept the policy pending the changes to the dangerous dog hearing language and the plaque? And then I'll, then once it's done, I'll submit it to you just to make sure you don't see any errors, but it'll be, um, done after that.
I'll make a motion to accept the updates, changes to the select board operating procedures as presented with the changes, uh, noted dog hearing plaques. Motion made and seconded, any discussion on the motion? Hearing now, Mr. May, how would you vote?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Toth?
Yes.
Ms. Bassel?
Yes.
And I will, yes.
Nice job, all.
Mr. Chair, I'll also.
Would entertain a motion to work past ten P M.
Second.
On the motion to work past ten P M. made and seconded, how would you vote, Mr. May?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Toth?
No.
Ms. Bassel? Oh, yes, there's always one.
Always one.
Sometimes it's been me, so what the heck?
There's almost two, yeah.
Monday, December eighth, twenty twenty-five, select board regular meeting. I move to enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A dash two.
Are we skipping board member comments?
Oh.
Board member comments, Mr. Chair?
Sorry to break the rhythm, but.
No comments, Ms. May, got it?
Yes.
My apologies to the board.
Um, I'm going to request that we do something to shorten the minutes. Um, I would like a little bit more brevity. I really don't wanna reread the entire meeting every time, uh, I come to a meeting. I don't wanna reread last week's meeting, or the last meeting, I'd like some brevity, I think it'd be accomplishable, and it would save us time and effort in my eyes, my old eyes, some strain. That is my comment for today.
Ms. Graves?
Um, I just wanna say, I think it was a pretty decent meeting, that's it.
Yep. Ms. Toth?
Yep, two quick things, I had a couple of residents reached out to me, they had some concerns that sidewalks over on State Road in both Ballinville, Otter River have yet to be cleaned. I made it a point to drive out that way on my way to work this morning, and I can confirm, those sidewalks have not been cleared. One of the individuals who brought it to my attention says, you know, back about twenty, twenty-five years ago, we bought a V plow for that, similar to the one sitting in front of the Public Works Building, but what's going on? And I said, a good point, I said, have you called and spoken with the D P W? He goes, it's a waste of time, they don't call you back, I was like, whoa. He says, okay, I I will address that. So.
What were those roads, Mr. Toth?
Uh, Route sixty-eight, State Road, both through Ballinville and heading out into Otter River, specifically in the area of Baldwin Drive. And I can see with the snow loads and stuff, it could be a nightmare for school buses, people passing, but that's a pretty busy highway, I would not wanna be walking out on the road surface when there's a sidewalk there that just hasn't been cleared.
Out of that sidewalk, the poles are in the way to, you know, the lower, the lower half.
Yep. Now, those were supposed to have been moved years ago too, so.
They did move, they moved some of them.
Some.
They did half of it, one half they didn't ask them. They did half of it when, half they didn't ask to be moved.
This is not the time to think about moving poles though, but it's later in the year. And I have one other quick comment for, uh, the board members and any of our other elected committees and groups. Uh, three fifty-one connect, formerly known as the Mass Municipal Association Conference is coming up. Registrations are live if you have not yet registered. We still have through this month to get the discounted rate. It's about a forty-five, forty-seven dollar discount if you register online now versus pay at the door when you get there. Hotels are a little pricey. Parking in Boston is even worse. Doing my quick and dirty on the back of the bar napkin math, it's going to cost me more to park the car than it is to stay there. Say ouch.
Don't get told, it's.
Excuse me.
I did.
Ouch. Yeah.
Ms. Bassel?
I'd be fine.
And I've said more than enough tonight. So. If Mr. May has no objection.
Well.
Move to enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Law Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A dash two. To conduct strategy sessions, strategy sessions in preparation for contract negotiations terms with non-union personnel. Steve Castle, where an open meeting would be detrimental effect on said strategy and the chair so declares. And I do, we will reconvene in open session for adjournment only.
Second.
Hope you made it. Seconded. Any discussion? On the motion, how would you vote, Mr. May?
Yes.
Ms. Graves?
Yes.
Mr. Toth?
Yes.
Ms. Bassel? I vote yes.